Hey, now it is 6:00 PM. I want to welcome everybody to the East Point City Council Special Meeting that we have in every special meeting. And today is Wednesday, June 2nd, 2021. It's gone by quick this year already. And at our special meetings, or any other meeting that is not a regular meeting, we only have one hearing of the public. We usually have it twice. And in the beginning and at the end. So just to let everyone know, if you want to say something at this meeting, you only get three minutes. So get your main points out the way. Usually, we don't have so many people at these, at the special meetings. So we're going to start with our roll call. Good evening, Ms. Walton.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmember Curly. Councilmember Donico.
Here in East Point.
Councilmember Lucido.
Here, East Point.
Councilmember Moore. Let me see here. And Mayor Owens.
Is here at East Point. And we have both our council members are both dealing with medical issues right now. And so we're going to pray for them. And that is why they're absent. So we got to move right along. So hopefully, they all come back at our regular meeting in the best health. So we're going to our hearing of the public is now open. We ask you to, at this moment, hopefully, it can be issues concerning what's on the agenda at this time. And if you have anything to say about it, or you know, talk about, about what's going on part of this agenda. And if not, you're still welcome to be a part of this meeting. As far as the hearing of the public, which are issues, concerns, and ideas. So we actually be respectful at this time. Ms. Walton?
Yes, Mayor. I'm not seeing anything in the chat. The chat is open. I don't see any hands raised either.
Okay, yes. Usually, we don't have anyone speak too much. So now the hearing of the public is now closed. We're going to go straight into new business. And we're going to talk about Nine Mile Strategic Corridor Plan. And we have AEW here. I don't know if they want to open it up first, but I'm going to give it to our, our city manager, and she can, you know, give it to whoever wants to talk first, whether that's our DPW director, or AEW, or economic manager. So I'll let her direct that at this moment. Is Ms. Dome on here?
Um, I'm not sure if she is. She did. She also had an appointment this afternoon. So I'm not sure if she made it back, but.
Okay, so we're going to go ahead and start with McKenna. We already have McKenna on here. They do our planning. And then we can go to AEW. And if you guys work together and explain this and talking about this to our residents and ourselves, we'd be happy, you know, to just go with the flow tonight.
Mayor Owens, can I make a request?
Yes, sir.
We, our traffic engineer, Mike Vigneron, is with us right now. He has another planning commission meeting that he needs to be at at 7 o'clock. And I'm wondering if it's possible, if we could, if you in the council would consider us doing Item B first. So if there's any questions regarding the traffic signal project, Michael is very familiar with that project and would be able to answer those.
Yeah, we can do that. We can, since she has to leave, we can come back to Item A and go to Item B. The adoption, you talking about the adoption resolution?
Yes, that's correct. Thank you.
Of the signal modernization. I don't know if council really needed, had questions on that. If you have to stay for that. Did you, Mr. Councilman?
Yeah, Mayor, we do have a couple of questions.
Okay. So, so we're on, we're going to go back to Item A. We're on B, Adoption Resolution Number 21-1924 M dot contract. Number 21-5131 for signal modernization improvements along Nine Mile Road and 10 Mile Road. And you have the floor. AEW? I think the guy said he had to leave in a minute. I'm sorry, who was that?
Yeah, we're just available to answer questions.
Okay, okay, council.
Sure, yeah, I could, I could go first if that's all right.
Okay, yes, sir.
Um, so I was originally planning to put this second, just so that we could have an overview of Nine Mile. And of course, these, half of the streetlights, or half of the traffic lights, I need to make sure I say traffic lights tonight, are on Nine Mile. And the other half are, of course, on 10 Mile. And I just wanted to talk about Nine Mile first, which we can, you know, make this work for everybody. But just wanted to bring it, bring it all together. Because of course, what we, everything we do on Nine Mile is going to make a successful Nine Mile. So we just wanted to add this to the agenda so that we could discuss potential alternatives. Right now, we were, we had previously talked about how it's all set up to do box span configurations for the intersections, which is, you know, the cables. And then at that last council meeting, we talked about potentially doing, I think, is it aluminum or steel? The black coated, like aluminum or steel poles, as opposed to the cable. And that was what we kind of wanted to tie into the rest of Nine Mile. And, you know, make it a whole strategic plan to make sure that Nine Mile is successful. But we just wanted to discuss potentially doing some of those different. And I think at least personally, you know, we could just discuss Nine Mile. I think 10 Mile, we can leave as the cable, you know, box span cable. But we could talk about potentially doing any changes on Nine Mile in regard to this contract. I know also, previously, I think our city administration had given some input. It didn't come to the council table before it got into this resolution. So I just wanted to make sure city council had a say, you know, we don't go forward with something that, you know, the city council ends up, you know, you know, being disappointed with, or something like that.
Councilmember Donico. You have a couple of images that you can share with the rest of council, so everyone can kind of see what the difference is between the two.
Sure. Yeah, let me, I had one up here. Where is it?
Can you send that to all the council? Because it sound like you and Ms. Lucido already had a prior meeting and have the information. Can you send that to me, as well as Ms. Walton, and everybody else will be all can have a copy?
I think he's going to.
Yeah, I would like my own copy, too. That's okay.
I'm just on like Google Maps Street View. I was just going to share a street view real quick. If, um, that is okay.
Yeah, I think you all should have got that information prior to the meeting.
Uh, so if, well, this, um, yeah, I think we, we might, we didn't share screens maybe last time or any images. But this would have been what we were discussing at the last meeting, Mayor, like the, I was saying, like the steel or aluminum. I guess I'm not sure which, which one it is. Here, you know, you see how there's like the, the bars and like the arms here holding the signals, as opposed to like cables. You know, we've got cables holding the traffic lights. So I was just hoping we could at least discuss potentially doing something like this, at least at some of the intersections, as opposed to like the box span configuration. I think, you know, it looks classier. I think it'll last longer, you know, and, and those sorts of things. So, that's really all. I didn't have any other like materials that I was planning to share, and other than like Google Street View. I'm in Oak Park somewhere. I don't know which corner this is, but Nine Mile and Scotia, I guess. But yeah, you can see that just like each, you know, this, these cars coming at us, you know, this, this arm is over here on this side of the intersection, and it kind of just follows around on each side there.
That's nice.
Yeah, I think so, too.
Yeah. How much more money would that be, I'm thinking? I'm wondering.
So yeah, if AEW can jump in on that and discuss that, I think they've got the details on that.
Sure, I will, I guess, take that question. Michael Vigneron, Anderson Exton Westrick, our firm's traffic engineer. So typically, this sort of configuration with the masked arms, with all the items that Macomb County Department of Roads usually looks for, for the signals that they would maintain, we estimate construction costs on the neighborhood of about $300,000 per intersection for, for one of these locations. And we've got some recent bids that support those costs in Macomb County. That's for a single installation. If you were to do multiple, you might get some economies of scale. So even if we said that, that came down, you know, maybe 275,000 or something in that range, would be about the price point you'd be looking at for a single location.
I have a question. Do you know how many traffic lights are between Grasha and Kelly?
Between Grashit and Kelly, I believe we have, including Grashit and Kelly, four?
Probably, let's see. So here's Grashit. I brought up a different tab here. I think you can see it, right?
You would, same between Grashit and Kelly, you've got traffic signals at Pleasant, Donald, and Schroder.
Yeah.
And then Kelly and.
Yes.
And then, yeah, down here on Donald, and then you'll, yeah, down on.
Isn't Pleasant, isn't Pleasant already the arm one?
Uh, one of them is, you know, they drop down there.
Now, you're saying the ones that Councilman Donico is talking about, is you, we have extra funding, but what, what that funding cover? Because I know you said for intersection, for area like that, it'll be 300,000. So if we have it the regular way, is it, I mean, what's the difference in the cost price?
Uh, so for the, the contract as bid, for the direction that we had received from previously when preparing the documents, there was a lot of reusing existing infrastructure to the extent feasible. We've got wood poles supporting the span wire in an effort to, you know, maximize the, I guess, the safety benefits that were being sought with the improvements. I think our average price per location is around 125,000, give or take, for all 11 locations that were bid as part of this contract.
Also, our 11 locations is, you said, how much is that now?
It, it works out to 110 to 125,000 dollars per, per location. So an extra 150,000 dollars, just using round numbers, you know, might get you from a, a wood pole supported box span configuration to a painted mast arm configuration.
What, extra 150,000, you said?
Per location.
Oh, per location.
Per location.
Okay, so we got 11 locations, so 150,000 times 11, pretty much.
That would be if, if you were to do all of them. I mean, I think the, from what I'm, you know, hearing anyways, 10 Mile, it's kind of left alone. The focus seems to be on Nine Mile. These upgrades. So even if there was the.
He's not in the meeting.
I think we were four east of Grashit, from there to Kelly, you know, you're on the neighborhood of 600,000 dollars, in addition to what was already bid. And this is just our estimate. Certainly, it either have to be rebid or negotiated with a contractor. And it's our understanding that a change of this magnitude at this point in the process is, is something that would require a fair amount of discussion with the funding agencies, as this wasn't originally part of the scope. And there's, you know, environmental reviews and things that are conducted based on the, the project that was being put forward for, for funding. So that would all have to be, you know, investigated. I think a fair amount more before a decision was made, just to, to change the project that's, that's been presented with the funding available at this time.
I think in addition to that, we maxed out the grant with, with the work that we were doing. So anything over and above the, the, the amount of the grant that we did receive, assuming that, that the state would feel comfortable continuing to fund it to that same level, anything beyond that amount would be the responsibility of the city then.
Yeah, I think so. We're receiving, yeah, 1.32 million. It looks like in the Federal Congestion Mitigation Air Quality Improvement Program Funds and Federal Highway Safety Improvement Program Funds.
That includes 10 Mile, too, Cardi.
Yeah, sure, sure. Yep. Um, so yeah, I guess, to me, I was thinking at least, I think we should consider this on a few of the intersections, you know, at least for Nine Mile. I, I think that would be nice, you know, to go along with all the changes we're doing on Nine Mile. I do understand, of course, that's going to take, you know, some discussion with M dot and the contractors, since it was bid. But I guess at least that's where I'm at with this. I think it'd be, you know, this is a once in a, you know, generation, you know, project, right? We're not going to touch Nine Mile like this again for, you know, 30 or more years at least, right? Or something like that. So, you know, even if we did spend, you know, extra millions of dollars, that's basically like over 30 years, though, right? You know, you know, I'm not saying we spend it all on, you know, the traffic lights, but I'm just saying altogether for this whole project, if there are, are things that would make a huge improvement. I was hoping at least today was like the time we'd come up to, you know, talk, talk about those. And I think some traffic lights, at least on some of the intersections, would make sense. Maybe like Ms. Lucido said, the ones, you know, Grashit to Kelly, including Grashit, Grashit and Kelly.
Yeah, I would, I definitely wouldn't want to do all of them because it'd be way too expensive. I, yeah, I was thinking because we're redoing Nine Mile.
Yeah.
Have this reconstruction, like Councilman Donico said. It would be nice to have the nicer lights. A lot of the communities are putting those in. And they do look a lot nicer than the cable lights, for sure.
I like the idea that he brung up, but I don't want to spend extra money when we still have residents that are complaining about their streets being pitch black. I went on, on a property, I've been on a couple of streets where it's so dark, I can't see anyone. And so our focus is not to, to redesign anything when we don't have certain things already in place for safety purposes. And so I think that should be our key, our key point in making sure that we get, it's been, if we're going to spend 150,000, $150,000 shouldn't be on design. It should be on safety. I think that's what we need to focus on, in getting lights on streets that don't have lights. I mean, we have a lot of safety issues, can get crime increase on these streets. And I think we shouldn't spend 150,000 dollars to, uh, to make our city look pretty with poles, would make our city look pretty with crime decreasing. And so I think we gotta, I like the idea, but if we had certain lights on certain streets already that were in place, and we didn't get complaints about people can't see and high crime in certain areas where people don't, can't identify who's walking down their street because it's so dark, if those things were already taken care of, I would be all for, you know, redesigning. But we haven't taken care of the basic first.
Madam Mayor, I do think we're going to start adding some more streetlights this year with our street lighting fund. I think we have money in there, and we're going to start adding streetlights this year. And then every few years, I think we'll be adding more. So I think that Mr. Marucci has a map of the city and the different areas, and how we're going to start incorporating those funds into the communities.
Right. And I think once we finish that, and we might need extra lights, we can use that money for that. I don't think we should. Right now, I don't think we should. I mean, like I said, I like the idea. There's nothing wrong with the idea. I just hate to, you know, design something. And we have a lack of lights in other areas. I think we should, that should be our priority, because we always can come back to this, correct? In certain areas, I just don't think it's priority right now. I think we're going to be spending a lot of money, additional money that the city don't really have.
Uh, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I think for, so for the, the street lighting fund, those funds have to be dedicated to that. And we, when we did reallocate, well, when we did renew the assessment, it was to add, I think, you know, I know Mr. Blum's on here, maybe he knows off the top of his head. I think it was something like there's funding to add 60 streetlights. It was somewhere around there, you know, maybe not immediately, but over a few years. And those funds have to be used for that. We can't use those funds for other things. So essentially, if, if we do this project or not, I think we can do both then. You know, we can accomplish what, what you're saying. And do this also on Nine Mile.
So you're saying with the, well, the 150,000 dollars extra per section, they were saying, we can't use that money on additional streetlights in other areas? You're just saying we only can use it for only Nine Mile and 10 Mile, or?
Oh, I see. Well, um, that, that'll be either like general fund or major roads funding, that part. And we could use that for either. But the, the 60 lights I'm talking about would come out of the money we collect from that special assessment. So it, it has to be used for those lights. So we couldn't use that to make like these nine mile changes. We have to use that for the street lighting. So we like, basically have to do that with that funding. But then we can use, you know, the other city funds to do things in Nine Mile.
Right. Well, when she told me the cost is 150,000, I don't think it's worth it now. Not for per area. Now, I thought he was talking about for all 11 or something like that. But I don't want to use money from the general fund for, you know, things that is not necessary.
Well, so what, what do you think about like, the two major intersections, Mayor? Because, you know, I think if, if we make certain investments on Nine Mile, you know, we could attract more businesses and then bring in some more tax revenue, too, because there's some vacancies, you know, and, if there's more business on Nine Mile, we could bring in more tax revenue. If we, what if we just did like Grashit and Kelly? And, you know, then we're certainly not doing all 11 intersections. You know, I think we can get rid of the, um, the five on 10 Mile for sure. And then even if we were discussing the ones between Grashit and Kelly, that's what, five intersections altogether? Or we could just do two intersections, you know, do Grashit and Kelly. Those are major intersections. They'll look a lot nicer. The poles will last a lot longer, that sort of thing.
I don't know if light poles will bring more revenue to a city. But again, I think we can use that extra money. I know, we talked about, I know this is kind of off, but we're talking about money. So in the city, I'm thinking about, we probably need some speed bumps that will help. When we talk about traffic and safety, that's, I'm looking at more lighting. You have speeding, that money, those 150,000 dollars, and things like that should be used for things to create more safety precautions in our community. You know, and that is how you get new businesses to come to your city, when the crime is reduced, and they don't have to worry about getting hit, or things like that. You know, the, you know, anything that spruce up the city as far as, you know, I think we just have a lot of things we need to, to take care of in our city before we go decorating it, if you understand what I'm saying. Like, we have streets that are dark, we have a high rate in speeding and speeders. We talk about that every council meeting. We always have a resident talking about it. And so once we do something about those things, then we can go back, then we can go to decorating our city a certain way. But who cares about, you know, how the, the light pole looks when, you know, they're, they have speeders and stuff. I think, you know what I'm saying? I just want our priority just to be more organized. And I, I think we're not looking at things the right way. I, I mean, I like the idea of the, I, I thought it was beautiful, but I don't want the residents to see us spend all this money on lights. And they all have, you know, the things that they actually asked us for, because I never, none, none of the residents asked for this. So if it had a resident that talked about, oh, you know what, when I went past, you know, the green light, I just looked up and the green light should, you know, it, it looked beautiful. I never really hear people talk about traffic lights being nice, or I won't ever bring more businesses to a city if the traffic lights look nice. I think when you have a, a decrease, and like I said, in crime and speeding, and you didn't want more visibility, uh, you know, a business don't want to be on the street where it's dark, you know. So I, I just think that the things that you're talking about is something that is innovative, and something that we should do in the future. But I just think we have a lot of things that we need to come back right now, that we haven't done yet, or even touched on.
I, I have a question for AEW. Um, so you mentioned that, like, if we decided to change and do these arm pole lights, that, um, we would have to go back and get approval from the state because of the grant. Is that correct?
That would be correct.
Like, do you think that this is going to be an issue if we were to move forward with doing that in a few of these intersections?
I, I know Mr. Kern had reached out to M dot today, and I think he's got some information related to that.
Yeah, I know. We had talked to M dot today about that. If we were to add, or to upgrade a few of these intersections of the mast arm signals, what difficulty we would have in order to do that, since we've already bid out this project? Whether we can do that through a contract modification as part of the project, they definitely discourage that. And so that it would probably be better to look at upgrading these at a future date, potentially, and do it as a separate project from the one that's already been bid out. The, the other thing, too, is that, at this point, we would be awarding the project. And you're dealing with only one contractor versus bidding, bidding these upgrades out. So you're kind of at the mercy of the contractor, as far as, you know, the pricing that he would provide in order to do those upgrades versus bidding it out, having multiple contractors bidding on these upgrades. I guess just to clarify also, the, the, there are six intersections that are included in the Nine Mile project. Beechwood, Hayes, and Grove, which are west of Nine Mile. And then you've got Pleasant, Donald, and Schroder. East of Grashit, as you say, west of Grashit. And then you've got Donald, Schroder, and Pleasant, East of Grashit. The Grashit intersection is not included in the project, since it's Grashit State right away. The Kelly Road intersection, there's actually, and Mike, Mike would have a better answer, so I think there's three traffic signals along Kelly Road, Nine Mile and Kelly being included as one of those that's scheduled to be replaced in 2023 and not part of this project.
Okay, so my recommendation then is to hold off. I don't know how Councilman Donico feels about this. Move forward with this project right now, and then just look into replacing Grashit and Kelly in the future with those new ones. No, they're not even included in this project.
Oh, okay. Yeah, yeah.
Those two intersections are the ones that you were just proposing. So if they're not included in this project, let's move forward with just approving this the way it is right now. And then in 2023, look into seeing if we can replace the ones, have M dot will let us replace Grashit and Nine Mile when we do Kelly.
Okay, yeah, I'm seeing, I, I see in the, the resolution now, I swear I read this like five times. I, I see, yeah, 10, 10 and Kelly is on here, but, yeah, nine and Kelly. So, yeah, so we, yeah, so nine is Beechwood, Hayes, Grove, yeah, Pleasant, Donald, Schroder. Okay, so then, and what were you saying, Mr. Kern, about Kelly Road was when?
Another grant that's been approved that, I believe it's Topher, Nine Mile, Stevens, along Kelly Road, that would be included in the project that's slated for 2023.
Okay, if we go all for that grant, can we go for the Nine Mile and Kelly corridor to be one of the arm ones, like in the proposal?
Yeah, we could look into that and have that discussion with M dot to see if we can include that.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, yeah, let's make that announcement right now. We don't want to do the arms and all that, so we don't go out to bid. Okay, so actually, maybe this does work out really well then, actually, even easier than we were originally stating. And then, so was there any plan for Grashit and Nine Mile?
I'm not aware of any plan, but I can check in with M dot to see if there is any future plan to do any upgrade. I know they are upgrading certain traffic signals along Grashit. I have not heard about the Nine Mile intersection, but I can find that out for you.
Okay.
Madam, Madam Mayor, can I add a, just a comment there?
Yes, sir.
Just to, just to tack on to what, what Mr. Kern said, you know, currently with the rebuild of Grashit in Roseville, they offered Roseville the option of upgrading the masked arms to the, the black, the painted black ones. they offered uh Roseville the option of of upgrading the mast arms to the the black, the painted black ones at at Roseville's cost. And Mike, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe you indicated that they Roseville is upgrading the Utica and Grashit intersection, and the other ones are 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 um going to be the 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 silver mast arms like you see in in the picture right now.
Uh, correct. Um, those are actually just going to be the the span wire installations at every location except for
Okay.
Except for Utica, yeah, and Grashit.
So so the box span option then, I'm sorry, the mast arm option that M dot gave the city, they would have to pay for the the upgrade
Okay.
To the mast arms.
Yes, yes, yeah. I would expect, but if they do Grashit and East Point, I would like to do the Grashit nine mile upgrade then at that time because with the mast arms if they
Okay.
Home option.
Okay.
Now, when you say the mast arms is that that long, explain that. It's not like I I learned that in high school. Tell me what that is right there. That's okay. That's what I thought. I don't know the language, the lingo. So, okay.
All right, so I can make a motion to adopt resolution number twenty-one dash one nine two four approving M dot contract number twenty-one dash five one three one for the signal modernization improvements along nine mile road and ten mile road.
And I'll support that then.
I have one more question. Now with these awards that's being funded, we don't have to um match it or anything, do we? This is all, we don't have, it's it's not coming out of East Point's pocket. It's just the they award us the money, we're going to use that and we don't have to match it or anything, correct?
This project, but there's two separate grants that are being awarded through this project. The nine mile phase is under the what's called C Mac Grant uh congestion mitigation air quality. There is no match to that grant. The ten mile phase is through Highway Safety Improvement Program. That does have a ten percent match. That ten percent match is being shared between East Point, McCall County Department of Roads is as ten miles under jurisdiction. And the city, and the city of Roseville too, as three of the five uh intersections border Roseville. So East Point would be responsible for thirty-five percent of that ten percent, which they're roughly going to be about eighteen to twenty thousand dollars.
Okay, yeah, thank you. You got a motion to support. Please follow the roll.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. Thank you for uh staying with us, and they have another meeting to go to. We appreciate that. So we're going to go back to the nine mile strategic corridor plan.
I'll stop sharing.
This was um brought up by Councilman DeMonaco, um Councilman Crowley, not in today. And you want the uh, I'll let you have the floor, Councilman DeMonaco, how you want to direct this.
Okay, uh, thanks, Mayor. I essentially um wanted to add this to the agenda, just to kind of have the same presentation for city council uh that the planning commission had. Um, and I think uh Ms. Peña is gonna share the nine mile strategic corridor plan uh that McKenna put together uh regarding those six hundred and thirty-eight responses they received to the survey that put together. Um, so I just uh wanted to share that so we could get some brainstorming going before we get too far into this project. I guess especially before we go out to bid on anything and go out to bid on the right things. And just, you know, if anyone in the community has any ideas that we make sure we at least, you know, uh, look into them.
Sounds good to me. You want to start with McKenna, Councilman DeMonaco?
Yeah, I think that'd be great.
Okay. Hi, Ms. Is it Pina?
Pena, hi.
Pena, that's a beautiful name. Yes, uh, good evening. Um, we give you the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Owens. So I am going to start by just sharing my screen, um, getting situated here. All right. So, yeah, just to quickly introduce myself, um, my name is Stephanie Peña. Thank you all for allowing me to be here today. I'm an assistant planner with McKenna. And I've been working with Laura Hall on this project uh for the past six months. So uh just to dive right in, the past six months, we've been really working on public engagement. Um, looking at different opportunities that we can engage residents, stakeholders and business owners. So what we have been able to accomplish is three points of interaction, one being a community survey, which Councilmember DeMonaco already mentioned, where we were able to achieve six hundred and thirty-eight responses. Um, the the bulk of my presentation tonight will primarily focus on data from that. Uh, we also were able to conduct a business survey, and I just want to give a quick shout out to Kim and Deborah um from city staff members that they've been amazing helping us out, really out there. Just um, I don't think we would have been able to garner such a great response without Deb's um social media efforts and just like going out and just reaching out to business owners one-on-one. Uh, so with our business owners, we were able to conduct a separate survey, and we ultimately reached eighteen business owners along nine mile. And then lastly, we also conducted eleven one-on-one stakeholder interviews. So this occurred with um local residents who are a bar, a part of various boards in the city, business owners, public safety officials and um state and county level uh actors. So to just dive right in, um, like I previously mentioned, we're, I'm going to primarily talk about the community survey uh where we received six hundred and thirty-eight respondents with the overwhelming response from women. And when we really, we really wanted to gauge, as we do in many surveys, just trying to get an understanding of who's actually responding to the survey and where where do they come from, what is their relationship? And in this respect, how do they, how do they navigate or what is their relationship to nine mile? So what we saw is that an overwhelming response of seventy-two participants, seventy-two percent of participants um actually visited nine mile primarily for shopping and dining from within the city. Um, what we saw to a lesser extent, are with our main focus being on reaching residents that are within a quarter mile um walking radius from the nine mile corridor. Uh, we saw that only approximately a little bit under ten percent actually live along nine mile. But I think it's important to note that in this category identified as other. Um, I just, I just realized I didn't check. Can everybody see my presentation?
Yes.
Okay, I just, I was looking at something else. Um, and and thank you. In the other category, a lot of the people wrote in that they live within a five block radius. Um, and to sort of break it down even further on who we actually were able to get responses from. I think it's important to note the racial and ethnic distribution, um especially when we're trying to look at this plan with the inclusivity lens. So we saw that approximately um eighty-two percent of respondents identified as white. And as many of you guys know, this isn't necessarily representative of the East Point demographics. We saw in the two thousand eighteen um American Community Survey that approximately forty-nine percent of East Point residents identify as black or African American and forty-four percent identify as white. Um, with smaller percentages of two percent of the population identifying as mixed race and one percent as an indigenous population. So this is just something we just wanted to point out and make aware to you all um as we're going through the 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 data from the survey. So we understand that the data, we got an amazing amount of sampling, but it may not be representative of all the population that is within the city of East Point. In regards to income, we saw that there was a normal distribution of a variety of populations um from low to moderate to high income with the average resident who participated in the survey ranging between fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars a year. So getting into the fun stuff, we asked the residents to really highlight what are their favorite aspects about nine mile. And what we immediately saw was that um people really, a large majority of people, approximately thirty-four percent really liked the variety and mix of businesses available along nine mile. And this really aligned with what we saw from the business surveys as where were where where business owners indicated that variety of businesses along nine mile was very positive for them in conducting their business. We also saw that unfortunately, some of the more least favorable aspects of the corridor included the availability of affordable housing, the quality of housing, as well as the presence of public art along nine mile corridor. And what this means to us, it just sort of indicates that these are areas where um where East Point can potentially improve these aspects to make it um more positive feature of nine mile. Next, we asked asked respondents about their satisfaction with different aspects of the nine mile corridor. And we were able to garner a lot of data on this, and it is a little bit fuzzy, um, but I just wanted to point out some some quick important features. So if you pay attention to the the data points in green, these data points, um, the hours of the hours that businesses are open, like the range of hours, as well as the availability and condition of sidewalks were two aspects of nine mile that were seen as some of the more favorable aspects of the corridor. However, um, items in red, the grocery store access and food market options, green space um and public art along nine mile were areas where people were unsatisfied the most, meaning that they're again potential areas of of improvement. So after try, after we gauge sort of like the existing conditions of the corridor, we asked respondents to just make suggestions on what sort of um improvements they'd like to see. And as you'll see in the map, if you pay attention to the yellow bars, these were the sort of the top three uh areas of improvement that residents and business owners and community stakeholders would like to see. So um, first and foremost, seventy-two percent really would like to see an investment in landscaping and beautification, so meaning increasing green space, um doing facade repairs on existing bills, businesses and buildings. And then again, um, about approximately half of respondents indicated that they'd like to see um the facilitation and design of more outdoor gathering spaces so people can meet socially. And then next, um, the third choice at forty-eight percent was the development of safer sidewalks and crosswalks across nine mile were of great importance for residents. Um, when we look at this other bar over here at sixteen percent, this is a, this was an opportunity for for residents to just sort of write in what they would like to see. And again, um, the responses largely centered around improving streetscape by establishing design standards. Um, and incorporating place making, increasing the diversity and type of businesses along nine mile and improving traffic flow along the corridor. To a lesser extent, there was a a small majority of people who actually asked for more policing along the corridor. And again, these um responses were very much supported by um the business survey where beautification, developing a sense of identity and as um better facilitating access points onto sites where were um mentioned as high areas of for improvements. So this sort of um blends us into a a couple of slides that we wanted just to take a moment because um we wanted to interview potential moments of improvement or potential tools that can be used to sort of highlight um and remedy what residents have highlighted as points of issues or points of improvement. So something that we wanted to talk about this evening was access management, which is a great deal of importance for nine mile where uh there's lots of businesses and lots of curb cuts uh in and out of businesses and where traffic can be congested, where pedestrians don't feel safe walking. So implementing different access management um tools and strategies can help facilitate an easier and um safer, efficient travel uh for all users. So you'll see on this slide, there's a multitude of principles, including limiting the number of driveways and prioritizing uh connections between sites to reduce the amount of curb cuts and um just promote connectivity within city blocks. And then of of important note, and what these images on the slide are really demonstrating, so on the top, you'll see uh auto-oriented use along nine mile. And the pink line is highlighting the length of that curb cut. So what, this is a challenge that you'll see um not super frequently, but quite often along nine mile where the curb cuts are very, very wide, and this can be very challenging for pedestrians to cross as they come into more potential points of conflict or uh contact with oncoming vehicles. And then on the lower side of the page, you'll see a fast food restaurant where there's um multiple curb cuts to get onto that site. And this really contributes to the congestion of traffic as cars trying to get in and out of that site as well as create a difficult area of walking for pedestrians. And to sort of zoom out, we're looking at Roche and nine mile here and just sort of further highlighting where curb cuts exist along nine mile and how they exist. So you'll see these pink areas. Um, so first, let me just orient you all. So I'm sure you're all familiar, but this is Roche and nine mile. Um, what you'll see at the south uh south of this intersection is Tim Hortons. North of this intersection is DQ and Spags. And then you travel down and you get to the East Detroit Bakery. So this is just a small segment, and within this small um segment of nine mile, all these pink sections abutting the road are actually curb cuts. So what we found along um nine mile is that on average, the distance separating each curb cut is about thirty feet. Um, M dot actually recommends that for a thoroughfare that is at thirty miles per hour, that curb cuts actually um range at two hundred and forty-five feet in separation. So you're seeing a a high of high frequency of curb cuts because of the variety of businesses along the road. Um, and unfortunately, the zoning ordinance as it stands today doesn't provide many provisions for access management. However, there are a couple of standards that indicate that curb cuts can't be within sixty feet of an intersection, but there's definitely another place for improvement um as we pursue this planning process for you all to consider.
Can I ask a quick question while you're going on?
Yeah.
Uh, can can you go back uh to that slide, actually?
Yes.
So when we are, I think one, one thing I guess I've been unsure about is to like the scope of how how this project will really work. Um, and I do appreciate these slides. I think these slides are um very nice and show how kind of crazy it is in some areas for sure with the curb cuts. Um, I mean, certainly, like, I know McDonald's was on the other you know, slide. I think they'd certainly do just as well with the the one driveway on that side instead of two. You know, I don't think that would affect them really at all and it'd make it much safer. But when we're repaving and reconstructing nine mile here, how much, like, how, what would that look like? And you know, maybe this is also an AEW question, and I'm hoping we can just connect the dots uh essentially between uh McKenna and AEW tonight and our DPW. Um, how would that look to, you know, I guess like the between David and Saxony on the south side? You know, there's three huge driveways there. How would we go about fixing that? Um, like, when we do this project? What what does that kind of look like? Because it's some, some of it's private property, right? I know some's like the right of way. I'm not exactly sure.
Yeah, and maybe AEW if they wanted to interject in regards to jurisdiction. Um, but I can speak to really quick in regards to how you all can enforce via your zoning ordinance. So just to go back one slide, um the variety of strategies that you could implement are are consolidating driveways and reducing curb cuts where alley access is available. And what that could potentially look like is here, which is the same image um where you see previously where the curb cuts previously existed, like maybe in this image where the Tim Hortons is uh when you're facilitating new development or maybe, and this is where AEW can come in on jurisdiction. I don't know how we work with them with a new, with an existing business, but if a new business wanted to be developed through your zoning ordinance, design standards, you could establish that. Or maybe the entryways are off of the side streets, or if there's an existing entryway, you can facilitate an agreement between businesses to let they share a driveway, um, which would would reduce the number of curb cuts. Or you could also facilitate where there's a alley access um already throughout that block that maybe you don't need so many curb cuts that entrances could occur through there, such as over here where there's a cost, there's a gas station, or I'm sorry, a car wash across from Saxony right here where instead of entering from nine mile, cars could enter from the alley to the cross, to the car wash. Um, so that's that answer. I don't know if AEW wanted to interject with anything.
I can add a few comments. Um, Stephanie, you you hit the nail on the head when it comes to redevelopment or opportunities that we get when uh site plans come in, in particular, like the Tim Hortons block that took up a whole block. But the reality is, is many of these blocks have multiple owners. Uh, I think the block between David and Saxony, there's probably three or probably more than three property owners there and the way that the driveways were originally configured to serve the buildings that are on the property makes it extremely difficult to remove and and or even consolidate driveways because of the the different uses in the in the activities that are occurring on private property. Uh, a lot of instances, and and we haven't started any any design work on this section of nine mile road, but Uh, a lot of instances, and and we haven't started any, any design work on this section of Nine Mile Road, but. Uh, we'll find that there may be right away issues uh, in some locations uh, that would prohibit us from from doing some of these things. It may require us to secure right away, and some of these buildings. Uh, the parking that's in front of the buildings, unfortunately, in some cases are the only parking that they have. Uh, so trying to acquire that property and change the the pattern of of parking and access. Becomes a challenge. So we we may be able to do to tackle some of this, I know the the picture that Stephanie showed earlier that. There was a drive approach oh, in front of a a parking area that was blocked off by big, big giant blocks. Now, that's a no brainer, right? We we can get rid of that when when the time comes. But some of these other ones, uh, where where there are multiple driveways serving multiple businesses, that they will be a challenge.
And is there any recommendation that you mentioned, like parking with some of these, but you know, especially like, I guess East Detroit Bakery, they've got that whole side lot now, that's brand new. But in the front there, is there any recommendation? And actually, that might not be that great of an example, cause it's not like right on the road, maybe by um. Like Detroit Wing Company, I think there, there's somewhere within a block or two of there, where you park like right off of nine mile. Should that all be like back end parking? I know I've seen that, I'm just thinking Oak Park again, I know they just recently, you know, did a lot of changes on nine mile. Um, so that's why I'm, you know, using them as an example, I think they changed all their straight in parking to back in parking. Is that like a recommendation of M dots or anything then, if there's any parking like that?
That would be on street parking, which which none of this is technically on street parking. Um, w- one good example that we we're gonna be trying to address. Uh, next year on the section west of Grashit would be at the foot of Hays. Where we've got that block where there is a very narrow area that's paved between the building and the. And the curb of Nine Mile Road where people actually try to drive down it and park in that area, I think there's three parking spaces in that little tiny area. Yeah, we are gonna work very, very diligently with the business owners there to try to remove all of that parking. They've got large parking lots in the back of their building, so that should be a com- be be able to be accomplished. Um, but that's not necessarily always the case. We have a lot of areas east of Grashit where the the parking lots in the front yards or the front setback area. Are wider and safer. Uh, but there are, there are several of them that require people to back out very close to the road surface itself. That make it very dangerous. So what what have to look at all of those on a case by case basis?
Hey, I have a question, just in regards to this um, limiting the driveway, so. Wouldn't we be able to at least like write in ordinance where like, for instance, like the McDonald's that has two entrances off of nine mile, like just limiting businesses to having. One, like if if you, I understand someone, it's gonna be tough, like you said, if there's three businesses, they all want their own own access. But if you you own a whole block, can we at least limit, like make an ordinance where limiting it to one entrance? On the, on the nine mile.
Yeah, yeah, you could definitely do that, but um, and just like Steve said, it would, it would primarily affect um, future development. Um, I'm gonna talk with Laura and probably Steve um, more on how that would necessarily work for existing businesses, but like Steve mentioned, it would. Be a lot of talking and communicating with business owners to see if they would agree on certain things.
In the area that Councilman DeMonaco um, was talking about, I believe is on this map right here, and it's um. The business that is going to be to like the far right um, on the top side. I think that is Detroit Wing Company, if I'm not mistaken, and you can see how it's like set back and there's parking. In the front there, and that's what he was talking about, the back end, right now it's pull in parking.
Yeah, I guess that's parallel, yeah, at least there, and I think there's some that's also like the full like, uh, you know, forty-five degree. Uh, spots to maybe a little east of that, then maybe also.
Yeah, I would. I'm sorry, go ahead, Stephanie.
Oh, no, go ahead, yeah.
I was just gonna say, I'm not a huge fan of what's going on in front of uh, um, that block. Only because it's in so close proximity to the the traveling roadway. Um, I would like to see it removed, but it becomes very difficult. When when businesses like the Wingstop, for example, rely heavily on people stopping, running in, running back out and leaving, you know, that's very convenient. Uh, and it would have an impact on their business.
Oh, and actually, yeah, it is, um, it is the parking, well, oh, it's a very small mix, there's like a couple. I'm on street view now, there's like one or two parallel spots, this looks very strange, I didn't realize this now, and then the rest are the forty-five. Degree angle spots where you just pull in right off nine mile, you'd have to back right on to nine mile. To get out of that spot, like there's three cars even parked there, right, you know, in street view.
That's what he's saying is is change those lines, you back into the spot, so you're pulling out on the nine mile instead of backing out on the nine mile.
Yeah, that's safer, I would think. It's kind of strange, people probably aren't, you know, aren't used to it, but I wouldn't wanna back on the nine mile, especially if you have someone parked next to you.
Yeah, I mean, even even, you know, even if you're backing in, you're stopping in the roadway.
Uh huh, yeah.
Uh, and then having to back in, which, you know, on a, on a, uh, a road that has a a low traffic speed. That i- in a, I guess in a more downtown area. That's safe, but on on a, on a road like nine mile road with a, with a higher traffic speed, that could be very, very dangerous.
Thank you, Steve. Um, so I'll, I'll just go ahead and yeah, please continue to interject if there's more questions, uh, so. In in line with access management, um, what's exciting is that if and if. Curb cuts are eliminated, if shared drives are introduced, and if alley access is also introduced. What that does is it opens the opportunity up for interventions of green infrastructure, and when we spoke with um. With Macomb County, they sort of indicated that the greening of this corridor is something that is of great interest to them, and. What we could do is um, introduce sort of things like. In previous pavement and street trees and green roofs by us wells and parking lot landscape. And what's great about this is that not only does it improve the mental health of your residents and support beautification efforts, um. Creating shade trees for pedestrians and just livening up the corridor, it also contributes to stormwater management. Um, which is super important. Uh, just some quick data points, what we found from walking along the corridor and surveying each parcel. Only forty-six percent of parcels have a tree lawn, and I think even with that data point, it's still important to note that a lot of the tree lawns that. Are in existence are just tiny little slivers of grass. Additionally, only twenty-three percent of parcels have um, onsite landscaping, so this is definitely another area that could be improved. To to beautify the corridor. So jumping back to the community survey results, just wanted to highlight again how people, how survey respondents were navigating the corridor. So largely what um, what we already probably all know is that a majority of people, over fifty percent of people actually. Drive to get to destinations on nine mile, just a small little quick anecdote, when I did um, interviews, I actually found a couple. People who lived near nine mile who would even drive just two blocks over because they felt really unsafe to walk. Uh, and in that regards, we see that approximately. You could probably say seventy percent of respondents feel a variety of levels of unsafeness when they're accessing um, nine mile as a pedestrian. And we found that only about twenty percent of respondents actually navigate um. The nine mile corridor with their bikes or walking twice a week, so it's very low rates. And this sort of aligns with how people would like to see investments in the transportation infrastructures. In um, along nine miles, so what we saw is approximately sixty-five of respondents. Really supported upgrading and maintaining existing road infrastructure, which is definitely an important feature of the corridor plan. Um, but then we also saw approximately half of the uh applicant or respondents indicate that they want to see safer streets for. Pedestrians and cyclists, and we also saw forty-two percent support uh, safer sidewalk crossings across nine mile. Something that's also important to note, and that we're gonna dive into a little bit, is that twenty-seven percent of survey respondents indicated they wanted to. See improved bus stop amenities. And what these bus stop amenities include are what you see here on the left side of the graph, um, everything from. Housing trash and recycling cans to um, better signage, uh, improved lighting, bicycle parking. To support multimodal navigation of the corridor, uh, comfortable seating, covered shelter and a concrete pad for standing. And along of for the respondents who indicated that they wanted to see improvements, trash and recycling cans. Was at the highest um, highest importance at approximately seventy percent. Um, we saw in the survey and throughout the survey that a lot of residents really attributed the litter. On nine mile to potentially have a solution, increasing trash cans at bus stops because they're so frequent. And people could use those more often, we also saw approximately sixty percent support more lighting. At the bus shelters to support the safety of riders, and then fifty-five percent supported uh, increasing covered shelters. I believe as of now, there's less than three or four along nine mile. So just to zoom in this um, on the corner of nine mile in Wellington, we wanted to focus on this one particular bus stop, just to sort of highlight the challenges. That are facing the bus stops along nine mile, so you'll see that there. It's a area that's grass and a a pole sign, and then there's a small concrete sidewalk where you would imagine that someone would wait. However, unfortunately, it's a little close to the roadway, making it potentially dangerous. It's not ADA compliant, making it difficult for someone who is of um, different ability to get on to the bus. Uh, and there's no covering, no bench seating and um, no trash cans, so there's just areas that could potentially be improved. And this sort of, this diagram really emphasizes more of what those amenities could look like. Um, the bus stop signage being increased a lot of with twenty-four bus stops along nine mile. Over a third don't have any amenities, they just contain signage, and so again, these are just additional areas that. Um, we're gonna work with the planning commission um, and other stakeholders to sort of navigate to see what. What improvements can be made at the bus stops to ensure the safety for all.
Excuse me, going back to that, um, I like that you said we need more. Paige just was off of with the, um, I I think I like with gross point, what they did is certain areas on their sidewalks. And probably where the bus stops are, they did a lot of um, public art with their seating. So if we can incorporate, you know, um, once we uh, do something with the bus area, but let it be artful, you know, add art to it. You know, in those locations that you were speaking of where people. Uh, you know, can sit or, and you know what I'm saying, and doesn't look like, you know what I'm saying, it has some type of life to it, so anything that you do. Add some type of vibrant, you know, life to it, you know?
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah, I agree with that, Mary, I think you're you're making me think of a bus stop I saw by McCombe Community College, um.
Hmm.
Just, I mean, if if it makes me think about that, look, yeah, it must have looked nice, um. Cause uh, yeah, there was some landscaping like you were saying, and yeah, definitely one of the covered shelters and things like that, definitely. Is nicer than what you showed a second ago, I think though, actually, and not saying we don't have any in East Point, but that bus stop is slightly outside of East Point. The one you just showed. Uh, this is a little east of uh, Shopper's Market, so that'd be Warren.
Oh.
Um, but we do certainly have bus stops that look just like that, so not saying we don't, but. Wellington and nine mile would be um, Warren, but so yeah, any of them we have like that, you know, I, I I just. I I can't believe that we in the first place ever would just throw up a a sign like that originally when it was first built. And not have, you know, even just a, a bench, yeah, and especially like a garbage can or something, so. I agree with you, Mayor.
Right, a- a- like, yeah, add some life, uh, you know, some some life to it, I don't know how we do that as a city, do we partner up? Because sometimes when you deal with like, um, you know, private entities like Smart and D Dot. They don't want any type of decor probably because it's their their own personal, you know, image and stuff, and they wanna make sure. What the art is, you know, coincides with, you know, the their brand, so. I don't know how we would do that, you know, with them and say, okay, you put it there, we'll provide the art to it or something like that, I don't know how we. You know, um, you know, they put the seating there, but we have somebody come in and decorate, you know, the seating, you know. You know what I'm saying, I don't know how they would do that as a partnership.
Yeah, that's something that I could look into, um, I I didn't mention, but we did get to sit down with um, several smart. Um, planners and ask them specifically like about their input in regards to improving. These bus stops along nine mile and for them, um, cost is what's the major hindrance, but they are definitely trying to get. Grant money together to try to incorporate ADA um, entrances and concrete paths for all, because at minimum, that's sort of like. What they're able to do now, but I'm sure that they would definitely be willing to like talk with the city more about potential partnerships and. See um, what can be done.
No, I think we just, I think we had a meeting, um, I think it was Ms. Holman, Ms. Doom and several other of of us and Smart, and they were talking about. Doing something, you probably have to talk to Ms. Holman about it, I can't remember everything at that meeting, but. They're trying to do something as in regards to what you just said right here, and Ms. Holman, you you're on here, right?
I think she is, yeah.
In regards to putting some, I think it's on ten mile, I forgot what area it was, but they're trying to bring some life in, you know, in that area, so there. So some of the stuff that we are are actually already talking about, but if you get with them and they can see this, this plan. Because I don't think they seen this plan, they can, you know, add to it and do, you know, since they're already working on East Point, they can start. You know, um, in certain uh, locations where they have the smart buses and doing some of these. Uh, additions to what they are ready to trying to do, I think one guy named is Fred Barbette, I think.
Okay.
Um, yeah, cause we have uh, their uh, most of their staff here, it was a a month ago, I believe. And they did a, um, they also, you probably also get with Ms. Holman, they did a survey throughout the community as well and what. Uh, the cities, the residents wants to see in a city of East Point, and so if we collaborate that survey with what you already have. And talk to them, since they're already trying to do something and they have the money to do it, we can co- you know, go ahead and say, well, we have the plans already. You know, uh, and you have plans, you know, what is more feasible and more, what's, which um, is more easier to start on right now? You know what I'm saying? And also, I know the DIA worked with us with um, Councilman DeMonaco, uh, uh, wife Alyssa Diabot. When, and you know, she's the director of the Culture Diversity Committee and Kim Holman, and we all did something together as a whole, as a community. And we did the public art uh, project, and so, you know, collaborating with the DIA and helping us, you know. Fund some of these art projects. You know, that will help too, you know, so get those partnerships together, so uh, East Point don't have to pay so much money.
Yes, I'm definitely happy to help with all that.
Yeah, you can get with Ms. Holman with that, so, cause she'll remember more of the conversation and what what areas they were trying to do these addition. Additions to for public transportation. Yeah, um, you know, so you can see, so everybody don't have to do do anything, uh, you know. Uh, you're doing it this way, you know, we need to come together with all these ideas and it be, and make these transitions more quicker than. McKenna doing it this way and trying to figure out, and then Smart is trying to figure out when everybody can come together and make it more easier, cause that's too much work trying to do it on your own.
Yeah, that's totally a great point, yeah, I'm gonna debrief with Laura tomorrow, we'll call, we'll call Kim and Dev as well, make sure everyone's on the same page. But I'm glad that you guys all had that meeting. Um, I know I I, um, the last couple of slides in regards to the community survey that I wanted to talk to you all about is sort of like. In reference to potential new development, so we asked, um, we asked residents to sort of address how. New heights along nine mile corridor and how how new heights could be um, managed as well as how parking can be managed, cause parking. Was seen as a huge issue along the corridor, uh, so when we asked residents what, um. If if heights could be um, increased along the corridor, where along the corridor would it be the most appropriate? And in this top circle graph, you'll see a sort of an even distribution of people's opinion, so you have a larger majority of people. Not supporting buildings taller than two stories along nine mile, which does potentially open the opportunity and. Um, just to take a step back real quick, when when we're suggesting increases of height. Buildings along nine mile, it's primarily to situate residential housing on top of already existing commercial spaces. Um, or even situating other uses other than retail on top, so including like office and other, other uses of that nature that don't. Require a lot of um. Require a lot of um foot traffic on the first floor. And what that does is that creates sort of like a vibrant mixed-use corridor where you have people living. On the same street where maybe they go to the store or maybe they work, maybe they go out to eat there, so it's just supports a more walkable community. Um so we did see about thirty-eight percent of people indicate that they don't wanna see anything taller than two stories. A lot of what does exist along uh nine mile is one story existing right now. We saw um we saw around thirty-one percent of people indicate that they would support an increase of heights. Um but only at key locations where maybe there's a a higher density of of user traffic. So specifically at the Grashit intersection or the Kelly intersection. And then we saw uh about thirty percent indicate um that they were willing to see height increases throughout the entire corridor. And then when we sort of dug deeper into this question and asked like to which height would be appropriate. We saw um sort of again a dish uh uh even distribution of of responses. But uh definitely a larger response of people's indicating that they don't wanna see taller buildings. Um but I think what's important to note is uh that twenty-five percent indicated. That they would support four stories, but only in special cases such as mixed-use residential. Where again, it's supporting that mixed-use neighborhood ideal where you have people living where they work and where they play, where they enjoy. Um when we asked about parking, because as you all know, uh parking is a as a serious issue for nine mile. Um and earlier when we talked about reducing curb cuts. Um that sort of plays into this, what what respondents really asked for. So respondents, that seventy-three percent indicated that they would support for future developments. To manage parking by allowing shared parking um spaces between businesses. So what that would entail is businesses developing in agreement with one another, um taking to account each of their respective peak times. And allowing just like one entrance onto the site. Um and allowing for for the parking to serve more than one, more than one use. Um and that's great and in line with access, the access management slides that I showed previously. Because it really does control for the amount of curb cuts and um promote the safety of pedestrians while sort of just facilitating um. More environmentally friendly area cuz less um impervious concrete.
I ask a question now, one back to parking. Now, I see, you know, I think a lot of them are doing a um share parking between businesses and saying, you know, um. Cuz I think Big Daddy Games, oh they have limited parking, I think they they have been overly crowded. But what he has did was ask the business owners on the days that he's crowded on Saturdays when they're closed. Can we use your parking? And they say, yeah, and he makes sure that if any of his um customers leave trash. And sometimes they don't, you know, we always have that one, they always make sure their parking lots are clean. But in addition to that, is there something we can do to do something on the rooftop of these buildings and create something where. These they can have parking on top of their buildings. You know, and um yeah, some type of ramp that goes up to their their uh their rooftop. Where they can have additional parking because how East Point is created is gonna be really hard to recreate more space on the sidewalk. But how can we create space, uh utilize space that not being used like the rooftop, like downtown Detroit does. Downtown Detroit does a lot of parking on their rooftop. And also uh create spaces on the roof of these businesses where they can utilize that space to, you know, now with COVID. They can use that, utilize that space to do entertainment or outside dining.
Yeah, I'm not sure about the parking on top of buildings, I'll definitely get back to you on that one, I think it would have to play into um. The the structural integrity of the buildings.
Right, of course, and if it's not structurally uh right for it, how do we create something on top of the roof where it can be parking?
Yeah, and I know something that um sort of that Laura and um others have spoken about in the past is. What are where are, and like you mentioned already, Mayor, it's like where are the opportunities to incorporate new parking? Cuz it is so constricted on nine mile and then you have the alleys and then the abutting residential. So I know one thing that was mentioned, it's not, it wouldn't be sort of like rooftop parking, but the city acquiring parcels and developing some. Just sort of like frequent um surface parking lots or community lots, I think you see it a little bit in Ferndale where they have. Um like a shared parking lot for like a block or two of businesses and you sort of try to promote people parking there and just walking to their business. But um it's definitely something that needs a bit more brainstorming and that we could definitely talk more about. So I think so that just um the last slide in regards to community survey and regards to new development. Just wanted to share what respondents indicated as what their preferred uses along nine mile would be. And it's really interesting, so we see a lot of uses that really play into. Um and maybe this is largely impacted because people have been living uh in COVID and in quarantine, but a lot of outdoor uses. Um and a lot of experiential uses, so we have seventy percent of respondents indicated that they wanted to see farmers markets. And this plays into the need and access for quality, affordable, healthy foods. Uh we saw sixty-eight percent want to see more sit-down restaurants, they like the restaurants along nine mile. But just to see more diversity of restaurants available. And this led into a huge proportion of people also wanting outdoor seating. Um thinking through how that could look along nine mile, but definitely supporting the idea of including that. We also saw parks and green spaces and more breweries and distilleries. So a lot of um people supporting um these uses really just sort of pushes the notion that we wanna support a nine mile. That is mixed use and is more walkable and is um supporting of the creation of spaces and places where people can gather. And commune and have fun. I do think it's important to note before I go into the next slides that some of the least desired spaces are. Um drive-through restaurants, uh office spaces, pharmacy clinics and multifamily. So just to wrap up the presentation, we just wanted to show some corridor precedents to just give um insight into. A lot of these interventions that we mentioned, like what do they actually look like, what could they look like? So we have some images from southeast Michigan and I'll go fairly quick to this just to be cognizant of everyone's time. But here in Fenton, Michigan, you have a crosswalk that's ADA compliant, that's demarcated with a different material than the concrete. And that is um protected with these lighted ball ballards. So what this does is, as you can see the image, it just facilitates safer pedestrian access throughout the corridor. Especially when it's a budding uh uh rather busy corridor.
All those lights that you just showed, now I know Councilman DeMonaco was talking about the the traffic lighting. I would like to see those on on nine mile as far as, you know, with people riding their bikes and stuff, I think that would look nice too. If we come back on nine mile or, you know, our major streets with, you know, lighting and things like that for our downtown development area. Think that would really look nice.
I have a question about those lights too. Would we be able to put those lights on our pedestrian like islands that are in front of the police department? Like are those steel like where they wouldn't like if a car hit it like?
I don't know, that might be a uh, yeah, I'm not familiar, I can definitely look into that for you.
Cuz we have an issue with our pedestrian islands being hit all the time, but so if there were. Like that light's like lower than like the street lamp we had there, where maybe cars would be more likely to see it.
Yeah, and I was actually just talking with Laura about that cuz so I I live in Detroit and we had the same issue with um the new streetscape improvements along Laverne. And um it's, yeah, I think it's just something, uh people just take a little bit to get used to it, but she did mention that sometimes. Um when incorporating, and I think she's um she spoke with AEW about this. Cuz we are working with AEW throughout all these planning processes, but um incorporating more landscaping like grasses in the medians. Instead of just having a fully concrete one, which I think they're in discussion for doing in um phase one of the of the plan. Uh will help facilitate people seeing the medians better than than they are now. Um but I can definitely look into these lighted ballards to see what the material is and if they could. Um withstand impact and whatnot.
That's one of my my goals, less concrete on nine mile for sure, there is so much concrete. Fix that.
I have some images of that as well, I believe. Um so then this is, this plays into sort of the complete streets model, which is an initiative to just to support um the use of roads. By a a diversity of users, so you'll see the bike blocks here, you'll see the demarcated crosswalks um for individuals. Um see multiple crosswalks, a bike crosswalk and a pedestrian crosswalk. Um there is ADA compliant across um crosswalk entrances at all corners. And then a median in the middle, um medians do slow down traffic a bit. Here again is um in Hazel Park, they had, you can tell exactly where they took out concrete. To reinforce their crosswalks to be ADA compliant um and did the zebra striping crosswalk.
What are the triangles for?
I'm just showing direction. Yeah, to just showing um preferred direction of travel.
Isn't it pointing the opposite way?
Yeah, that's something, so when I was younger, I learned to ride a bike like this where you travel in the direction, like in the opposite.
But we're looking at the other uh and I think. In the street, yeah, in the street, I won't tell people to rap rap their bikes in the street that way.
I don't know, I I can double check on that, I don't know, I was actually, I forgot to ask about these triangles, but yeah, that's a good point.
Okay, I was just curious.
Oh, and then this one, I think I really like this one and I feel like it's really applicable to to East Point, so this is in Farmington where. Um so you can see where there's outdoor seating in front of the commercial spaces and then to separate from the busy road. They put above fence and then like two layers of landscaping. And what's interesting about that is that like the buffering like landscape really does offer a sound barrier and appropriate buffering. Um for people who are sitting outside adjacent to a busy road. Also, it's it adds to the beautification factor, so you barely even notice that there's cars flying by. Um but this is one of my favorite pictures um in regards to potential precedents or examples for East Point.
It's pretty, it's beautiful.
Yeah.
There were as many trees in that picture as there are on nine mile between like Grash and Kelly.
Oh, and then here is just a median that's been landscaped fully, just um another way to incorporate green space when you have a constricted roadway. And then um this is an example of a bulb out. I think sometimes we mentioned bulb outs when we're talking about street improvements, but it's hard to imagine what it looks like. And essentially it'll it essentially allows for more pedestrian um safe space or like access on the concrete. It reduces the length of travel that they have to go across. And then it also creates areas where you could have parallel parking tucked in safely.
Actually, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, 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 go ahead.
Um, actually, can you go back one, two, I had a question. Um, so on nine mile, can we talk for a second about the amount of lanes and stuff, so? Um, would we be able to do something like this on nine mile? I guess there's, there's gotta be sections probably where we wouldn't need to turn left. We could do something like this or um. You know, two two lanes on each side and a middle lane versus even like one one lane on each side in a middle lane?
This is something that Steve is um i- is is um, this is his sort of area of focus. And I can revert it to him if if he has a response.
Okay.
Man of Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Um, so when we did meet uh and and go over the results of McKenna's study. We talked uh pretty much in pretty in-depth about where the those possibilities might lie, at least in the first section between. Uh Beechwood and Grashit. And the the only area that really made sense would be from Grove going east. To some point shy of the entrance to the uh senior housing building on the north side of the road. And that's fairly significant, could be somewhere in the neighborhood of three hundred, three hundred and fifty feet long. Where there's no left turn movements coming from either eastbound or westbound. So tha- that's one area that um you know, that that we could look at this for. And in all the other locations, there's just so many driveways and and side streets. That uh it's impossible to put anything in that would that would make sense.
I I have a question, so I don't know, like if if we did that and we had some breaks. I mean, couldn't people just utilize like the half-mile roads more? You know what I'm saying? And this would slow down traffic on nine mile. I know like obviously in front of like police and fire, we wouldn't be able to do that because especially in front of front of fire, like they need to be able to get in and out. With a lot of, you know, with a decent amount of space, but I mean, like if you're going to McDonald's. Like we're talking about like eliminating, like trying to eliminate these access points even into nine mile. So if we're already trying to like encourage businesses to more utilize the alleys, like putting something like this in, I feel like. It's just gonna more kind of direct that traffic to be utilizing those alley entrances.
Yeah, that's true.
I think you're gonna find a lot of uh frustrated and upset business owners that uh are are going to. It's gonna be more difficult for people coming and going from their facilities. Uh it it's gonna require them to to go, you know, farther farther distance. Then you're gonna potentially have people doing U-turns at the ends of these islands. In order to come back in the other direction, which is a, you know, probably a prohibited movement that could create some other issues. Uh the other problem you run into is because we're only dealing with an eleven-foot center turn lane. That lane is not, uh the the closest example I can give you is uh like Mac Avenue through the Gross Points. That's a twenty-foot wide median, wi- and that it's that twenty feet wide is too narrow, they have openings at every cross street. And if you've ever driven in that area, it's it's extremely uncomfortable if you wanna make a left-hand turn cuz you you barely have enough room to get in that island. Wi- with either the rear of your car hanging out on one side or the front of your car hanging out on the other side. And that's a twenty-foot wide uh uh area. In our case, we would only have eleven feet, which would be um very, it would be a safety problem.
So my my second question is, can we go back to the Farmington one that you had showed us earlier? One, what if like we, would we be able to do something where we we skinny it to three lanes? Keep the turning lane, you know, one going nor- and one going east, one going west. Keep the middle lane and then skinny skinny it where we might be able to do a bike lane and like something like green. Or more of a green space on the side, something like this, it does really doesn't have to even the fence, but some sort of green space along the the bike lane.
That that's a great question, Sarah, and. You know, we were taking a quick look at the traffic counts on. And as you go, believe it or not, as you go into Oakland County on Nine Mile Road, the traffic volumes reduce pretty significantly. We've got, we've got traffic counts between Grashit and Kelly or Grashit and I ninety-four. Approaching twenty-five thousand vehicles uh um and a average daily traffic, which. Which is too much traffic for for two lanes in a center turn lane.
My question would be, I'm sorry to interrupt, my question would be though is what were those traffic counts when before they skinny nine mile? Like what, obviously it reduced the traffic count because people are taking the outside um roads more. Because of the speed limits are increased, so they're gonna be more likely to take eight mile and ten mile, for instance, here in East Point. But like what were the traffic counts before they skinny, let's say, through like Ferndale? Like what were the traffic counts previous to them shrinking that?
Yeah, and and I don't know the answer to that, and I and I'm not even talking about the downtown Ferndale area, I'm I'm just. I'm talking about in just in general on Nine Mile Road as you as you leave. As you go west of East Point and continuing to go west into Oakland County, the numbers drop pretty drastically. And maybe because um. You know, I don't know the reason why that would be, but.
Well, I mean.
Be able to send us?
As soon as you get into Warren, where you lose a lane, like as soon as you get into Warren, you lose a lane, so less people use nine mile. More people use ten mile in Warren than they do in East Point. People in East Point take nine mile because it's wider and it's faster, which I understand. You know what I'm saying? When you get into Warren, you're going down to four lanes, you're losing that left-hand turn lane, which slows down traffic going through Warren. So less people are, you know, utilizing it. I just think that if we were to shrink nine mile, less traffic would be just on nine mile. Like it would slow that traffic down because people would be using, which would make it more walkable throughout in the middle of the city. Because people would just use eight and ten mile more, like if they're going home.
So.
Are you getting these numbers? Cuz I've tried looking on SEMCO for the traffic counts, I guess, but. A lot of these areas didn't have been very many examples, so I guess if you can send us wherever you're looking.
If you go to, if you just Google Trent SEMCO traffic volumes, it'll take you to their map. And all of there's, there's volumes all the way down Nine Mile Road.
Yeah, when I looked in Ferndale to try and compare. Because then, you know, because there nine mile used to be wider. And I was trying to do the comparison, I think, you know, Mayor Proton Lucido saying before they shrunk it. But there were very few ex- like example uh data points, there were like two or something like that. And then in East Point, there were a lot more, so I wasn't really able to compare, at least what I was seeing on that on the SEMCO site.
Oh, you you're looking looking for historic data?
Yeah, to try and compare, because like if it. Like, I think like Sarah's trying to say, like, we've got eight mile, ten mile, ninety-four, Grashit. Like, you don't need to take my nine mile to go fast. You've got everywhere else to go fast. People will just decide to take a different road if we shrunk nine mile.
That are both thorough through fairs too, that run the same direction.
Actually, frankly, I take Stevens instead of nine mile, because I think it's kind of faster and there's no traffic, but there's no traffic and you just.
So the the other thing that we're up against is we are well into the design of Nine Mile Road. Uh that project is scheduled to be completed design-wise uh by late summer, early fall, so that it can be let. And construction can start in early twenty twenty-two. Uh so any modifications or changes that we make need to be made immediately. Uh we're, you know, we're, we would already need to do some rework. And probably some significant traffic study if you're talking about dropping a lane.
Uh I guess this is why I brought this meeting up, because I'm uh we were only, we only did this survey. Uh we only had the survey results in April, so why would we have already? Um.
Well.
Before we even had survey results, I guess is what I thought, and that's why I wanted to bring this up, so we had a council discussion before we went too far.
Well, we we had to, I mean, thi- this 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 project was programmed a couple of years ago. And it wasn't up until recently that McKenna was able to get the grant for the for the study. We had, in order to maintain the schedule, if if we miss the opportunity with M dot, we lose that money. Uh so we had to continue with the design process, uh that that was a must.
Well, I'm hoping we can. Like have these discussions instead of like with, uh you know, I don't know why um the uh traffic light discussion happened like it did. But, you know, we all of a sudden had completed bids in front of us before city council even knew we were going out to bid. Um. You know, I'd like to have these discussions beforehand if we can do some things that are gonna make a huge difference um. You know, and then not change it at the last minute. I'm hoping we can do it in the right chronological order also. Like if you've already done some of the planning work, um. I mean, I know I saw some emails from you about trying to figure out how the right of ways work. I didn't think we were too far into it, so I was hoping this was gonna be. This meeting be on time to talk about even west of Grashit. You know, I think there might be less, a little bit less discussion there between than between Grash and Kelly. You know, especially with how like the master plan was just recently set up when that was uh finalized as a new program in January twenty nineteen. Because that was supposed, you know, between Grash and Kelly is like the local business. And then outside of, you know, the west aggression, east to Kelly was more, I think, like regional business, if I recall correctly. Um, wanna make sure we like have these discussions before we get too far on anything.
Stephanie, are you familiar with the, I I thought that there was a grant. That either the DPW director at the time or potentially McKenna. Helped to try to secure, uh was a was a study for uh potential bike lanes on Nine Mile Road?
Yeah.
Um, so I will, I don't know if you're referring to, so Laura helped facilitate the the SEMCO grant, which is for equitable um transportation along Nine Mile. And I think that's what's supporting us as consultants and um the study and the survey results that you see. Where see here.
I thought somebody I I indicated that there was um. Recommendation that that Nine Mile Road was not a good corridor for bike lanes.
I think I heard that too. I think we did say, I think someone did say that. I remember that conversation. They said because it was too busy, but I think that's why. Councilwoman is talking about um making it lesser, and if we, I don't know if it's too late, I don't know if i- if that's the issue. But I was even thinking about having those. Those gates right there and behind those gates, ha- you can't even do a bike lane if we if it's too late. So I know in Detroit, they have a bike lane that's near the street, so you side by side with a car, but then you do the um. The gate on the side of the street and then the other side. Have a bike lane, I don't know, just um more. More um safe.
Right, Madam Mayor, I understand exactly what you're saying. That's kind of what I was was kind of thinking about. Yeah, I was in the same concept, like just eliminate like the right lane on both sides, and the first half of the right lane. Would be like uh of like something like that, you know what I'm saying, to separate it from the bike lane, and then the bike lane would be closer like the businesses.
I I agree.
That would make it like safer, like you said, and I know that there's a lot of like, the only issue would be there's a lot of cutouts, once again, because of the driveways and. And things like that.
There's a trem- there's a tremendous amount of cutouts. I I don't know how you would accomplish that, because. The majority of the of the businesses have their driveways off of Nine Mile.
But even if we just shrunk Nine Mile down like right now, we regardless of bike lanes, if we if we made it three lanes, I just. And added more green space, I think it'd just make it so much nicer, or four lanes, just eliminate one lane, just to have more green space. On both sides, like throughout Warren, there's no left-hand turn lane. You know, I believe even through St. Clair Shores, there's no left-hand turn lane on Nine Mile. It's only through East Point. So if we eliminated that left-hand turn lane, just to kind of make it. Um, you know, nicer and have more green space available on both sides of the road, it would make it safer for walking. Even if we didn't but move ahead with bike lanes, I mean, just to make it safer for people. And I seem from these, um I re- you know, all the information we got, that's what people wanted, was just to be a little bit more walkable, a little bit feel a little bit safer.
Yeah, you're totally right. They did want that, but I can, I can, Steve, I can look for that study that that talked about bike lanes and then. For the rest of council, I can talk with Laura and Stephen C um. I think there is some cost estimates for what what um reconfiguring the road. Because shrinking down is very expensive from what I understand, right, Steve?
Well, and with all due respect, uh Councilman Lucido, and and we designed a lot of those, uh a lot of those sections of Nine Mile Road. I am ninety-nine percent sure that both in Warren and in St. Clair Shores, there it's five lanes. The center turn lane exists on Nine Mile.
Curry, you talking about making that, you talking about making that left on Mac?
Between like, let's say Hoover and Van Dyke, if you have a, can you do a screen share of the street view?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, for sure, west of uh East Point, it's four lanes, um.
And if you go to St. Clair Shores and you go to Jefferson and Mac or when Mac between Mac and Jefferson.
Right.
Go to the street view.
Yeah.
You turn a left there on Mac, yeah, St. Clair Shores.
There's no left-hand turn lane, I believe in either one of those areas.
Yeah, it's.
Any, you can do Nine Mile and Shana, there's no, there's no left-hand turn lane, except for right at the intersections, like those major intersections, there's five lanes. But like on like the residential areas, like there's no. You know, when you get to actual Van Dyke or Hoover, they they put in the fifth lane, but.
Yeah, I'm trying to, there's a ton of construction in street view here, it's hard to tell.
From the city limits of East Point to Hoover, there is a center turn lane on Nine Mile, that narrows down to where there is not a center turn lane west of Hoover.
Okay, yeah, yeah, right.
But anyways, I mean, we we would have to do a traffic study to determine whether or not it would be feasible to to eliminate a lane in either direction. And what the implication implications would be to eliminate that center turn lane.
I think frankly, like in McComb County, it just seems like we're we're stuck in this whole. I I guess it's like a chicken and egg thing we're talking about here, because. It seems like we just always want these huge giant roads that you need to be traveling super fast and. Um, when I mean, especially if we're talking about Nine Mile, and if we're saying we can't cut that down when only a mile away of Eight Mile. And you have I ninety-four, which is a freeway. And ten mile, which is four lanes and is pretty fast, and Grashit, which is a median split, you know. Three lanes and all that, but we can't cut down the one street through the middle of the city. Especially when if you go west, while in Oakland County, it's cut down, or like you were bringing up Gross Point. You know, a lot of those roads are cut down. I think people just go take it a different road. If we go with the ru- you know, amount of volume right now, sure, it's a ton of people and it'd be a probably a huge uh. Um, traffic jam, but people stop taking nine mile then, and they'll take a different road, which is only a mile away, or even. Topher and Stevens, like we were talking about, I'd take Topher and Stevens right now. Even to avoid nine mile if I can, it's just more, you know, it's nicer, I think, to take it.
I think congestion was one. Wasn't congestion one of the concerns that that the users identified?
Yes.
Right, so I think if we shrink it, less people take it, and there will be less congestion, I think, I mean.
I agree with Councilman DeMonico, I think that if, you know, i- if it's more of an inconvenience and it's not as fast, they're gonna take a different route. Because they're, you know, and it's gonna cut down on the congestion.
It's possible.
Well, we can certainly do a traffic study and evaluate that. Um, you know, I I think some of some of the um. The data, we're we're somewhat shooting at the hip at this point, because we don't have all of the data. And um, you know, we don't want to put concrete in where concrete's not needed. And I can, I can, you know, point to Eight Mile as an example of that, I mean, that was. A a successful project where we were able to eliminate a a lane of traffic.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's great, yeah.
Even with I'm doing a traffic study on Nine Mile, because. You know, we, of course, I know, I'm not, I don't have to tell you your job, I know, I'm just giving the suggestion, um. When you uh decrease the lanes, people are gonna go, of course, somewhere else. And so we have to predict where they're gonna go, and then if they're gonna be using, because we already have a problem with speeders. And things like that, people speeding, we need to try to come up with some idea where they're gonna go. Where they're gonna travel and how we can not have residential, uh especially on my street is. Since people can't get um make a left, like a turn on a a main road like Kelly, they come down Petersburg where I live at. And they speeding, and so how can we make sure that the decrease in speed like. Play certain speed bumps or different sign, you know, uh it might not be a stop sign at those locations now or yield signs. So if we're gonna slow down one area, it's gonna uh increase another area, and we gotta know what those areas are. You know, um to make sure people are safe. So we gonna uh, if we gonna limit that area, and you talking about Stevens, now it's gonna be overcrowded in Stevens, are we prepared for that? And how is that traffic light and things like that, and so I'm just, you know. If we're gonna move, you know what I'm saying, that's all I'm saying, and if we can't do the change. On Nine Mile and and limit it, like you said, um to those spaces, I would still like to see the gate and the green space. Regardless of what we do, I think it's beautiful. I think that's doable.
Right, Madam Mayor, that's my biggest thing is that there's too many businesses now that there's no green in front of the business, because it's all sidewalk. Like the sidewalk goes right up to Nine Mile.
Yeah, I would like to see that, if we can't do the, what you have suggested.
Just the turn lane, and we added like a half a lane on each side, so we could do a green space down Nine Mile, like in between all those driveways. I know it's not like a ton, because there's a lot of cut-throughs, but it would still add so much more green. If you drive down Nine Map Mile, like there's no green. Like nothing, this, it's so like industrial looking and not like friendly looking, walkable looking. It just does, it loo- it looks unsafe, and I feel like if we had the green space, like what you're saying about how nicest looks. It would just make it look.
Like I wanna shop there.
Right, and like. You feel safe walking to the store there, like you're not gonna get plowed over, like.
Yeah. So there's some way, um, Mr. Pangor, you can make, I know you gotta do the traffic study, not only on Nine Mile, but. You have to find out where those cars are gonna go. I know that's part of traffic study. When you close down a lane or a street, you gotta find out where those cars are gonna go and make sure that area is safe. So I know that's part of your traffic study, but then if we, like I said, um. With me and um in council, we're talking about regardless of the traffic study or not. We would like to see the green space in this gate, you know, on Nine Mile. I think that would increase, um. You know, people going into these businesses.
So my other suggestion too would only be doing this west of Kelly, like east of Kelly between ninety-four. There's so many tra- so much traffic that does come off of the freeway there. Um, and you already can't turn left onto like those side, on like the mayor's street. You can't turn left off of Nine Mile on those streets unless you're not supposed to. Um, I'm sure people still do, but you're, you know, so. Um, but you know what I'm saying, so that I would still keep open. We have the grocery store there, Office Depot. You know, to keep that left-hand turn lane through there for people who wanna go get their groceries or whatever. And but after, I'm just thinking on the west side of Kelly Road throughout East Point.
I would see it on both sides, even, you know, making the green space and make people wanna say. Look at the grocery store, look better, and because a lot of people shop at, these are some ma- major key areas, Office Depot, I go, I think I go to Office Depot every day. Probably, you know, people do their business, they do their their shopping, we have Second Glance right there. Just, you know, do it from from uh ninety-four all the way uh down, um. We have businesses, it's a, it's a small percentage of businesses going west, but you know, we have um Rogers Candy Store. We have a T-shirt, all these other that stop at the at the um borderline of Warren. So we don't wanna forget about them, you know, and may may, you know, because sometimes you go down that way, it looks all dry and boring. But if you see it clean, you might, oh, I didn't even know, you know. It was a store right there, and make you, you know, rethink shopping there. I just think, you know, on Nine Mile, like you said, it looks industrial.
In that area, I would be fine with shrinking it too, like where Rogers Candy is and the high school, just because I do think it would make it even safer. For like the high, if it's not as as deep for like the high school. It's not as, you know, wide.
Or by ninety-four where we were talking, um. Where you're not allowed to turn left, it'd be nice anywhere where you're like not allowed to turn left, we just make that a median type thing. Because then it's impossible unless you're gonna drive over the curb, you know, right now. I'll be honest, I know I've taken a left a couple of times into that speedway right there, you know, I shouldn't be, I do though, I'm. You know, and I know other people do, um if you're going east on Nine Mile, you know, you'll take a left in that speedway, but if there's a. Actual curb or something there, you're not going to.
I think what.
Should be right there, the Councilman DeMonico.
What'd you say?
I don't think that, I don't think the curse, I don't think a median, you talking about median right there, I think it might be unsafe, because you got all this traffic coming from the freeway. And people are merging and turning off the freeway to, you know, and it's so, it's weird how you come off the freeway and get on Nine Mile from there, so having that. Little piece, I think, I think that's what you're talking about. I don't know if that would be.
Yeah, just something there where you wouldn't be able to drive over the middle lane, you know, I don't, whatever that may be.
Well, then you won't be able to turn left anymore, to get the speedway.
Right, I I I agree with that. I want to prevent myself from turning left there.
I I think what would make the most sense is to look at the whole stretch of Nine Mile Road from the perspective of. Of either a road diet similar to Eight Mile Road, where we um eliminate one lane in each direction and. And end up with one lane in each direction plus the center turn lane. Uh or uh as uh Councilman Lucido pointed out, is to um eliminate the center turn lane. Either one of those options would create some additional green space.
I agree, and and that's what I'm really looking for, is just that additional green space, because Nine Mile just, I mean, it's it's right through the heart of East Point. And it just looks very industrial, I mean, it and it's not all the business's fault, because. It's just the way those buildings are set up, there's no place to even put green space in front of their buildings. That, you know, now we have an ordinance, obviously, if you open a business, you have to do so many trees, but if you don't have a spot where you can even plant a tree. You're kind of stuck, you know.
Well, some of the. If if I can just give you an idea of some of the things that we are planning on doing. Uh based upon the, you know, the conversations that we've had regarding this study earlier. Is we will be um updating all of the ADA crossings. Um, both across Nine Mile Road and on the intersecting side streets. Any of the crosswalks across Nine Mile Road, we will be using the continental style or like that you see in the picture right now. That style of crosswalk, so that it's very visible. Uh, I know, um, Ms. Holman has been working with Detroit Edison and. Uh, is looking at the cost to put decorative lighting on Nine Mile Road. Uh, I don't know, you know, we we don't have the results of the of the estimate from Detroit Edison yet, so we don't have any idea what that cost is gonna be, but that's being evaluated.
About all the use, a- all those, speaking of those, if we, uh, for a second, if we could, all the. We have so many wires on nine mile too, and I know I've seen like, I was looking at Oak Park today. There are zero wires in Oak Park on nine mile, like, can we um, we can put all that underground, right? I mean, it's uh, all the electrical to these streetlights, um, so there's no wires even coming off the streetlights like in Oak Park.
Yeah, so on the, yeah, any of the new, any of the new str- streetlights will be fed from underground. The most of the overhead lines that are on the south side of nine mile road are feeding the streetlights. On the north side, there was primary electric and cable and telephone. Uh, the cost to bury that on the north side would be very expensive. Uh, I believe that we asked Edison for an estimate of that cost. Um, but so that's being evaluated also.
Um, because if you're, if you're burying one line, I mean, is, is it that much more expensive to bury them all? I mean, I know you might need separate, um, what's the?
Conduits.
Separate two, yeah, separate conduits, but it seems like if, if you're digging at that point, seems like it'd be.
But they feed the adjacent side streets, they feed the businesses, uh, there, it's a little more complicated than just burying the ones that are overhead.
Yeah, because then you gotta come up on, you're saying come up from underground, overhead on each side street, sure.
And then there's, there's multiple utility companies and pri- and some private utility companies too that are, that are on those lines and each one of them. Have to uh bury their own facility, so it's, it, it's being evaluated and, and we'll report back to council once we have that information. Uh, we're also required by um, MDOT and the Federal Highway to increase the. Uh, or improve any of the bus stop locations with at least a five-foot wide uh sidewalk or concrete pad that's connected to the sidewalk. Uh, I think I did a quick count between Grashit and Kelly Road, I wanna say there's twenty bus stops. Um, so, but, but as we, as we reconstruct nine mile road, those, those bus stops will at least be improved with the, with the sidewalk connection to the back of curb. Uh, so that people can access the buses. Um, what else? We talked about the possibility of the um. The landscape median east of um, gr- um Grove. And. Yeah, I think those are the, the major highlights of the, of the, the stuff that we felt we could incorporate pretty easily. Now, there were, there were maybe four or five locations west of Grashit. Where M- McKenna had identified to us to, some areas where they thought we could eliminate or reduce driveway widths. I've, I've talked personally to a couple of those businesses, uh, specifically Motor City Collision. Uh, Micheludi Brothers, and they were very resistant. Uh, when I started to talk to them about potentially reducing the size of their driveway.
Isn't that less concrete for them to maintain?
Yeah, it would be, and they asked why we would wanna do that, and we said, you know, for the, for the purposes of trying to add more green space. They couldn't understand that. And they're, they're thinking mainly of their business and how they're um, operating and how they're getting vehicles in and out of their garages. And, and they just were not interested in, in having that discussion with me, unfortunately. So that, that may be difficult, but we'll continue to have those conversations.
Okay.
Well, I do feel like Steve wrapped this up really well, I just wanted to end off the slide, so, yeah, I'm here if there's any other questions. Um, Steve, of course, is here and then I can relay any information back to Laura that you all need, but thank you guys so much, you guys had some great questions. I took notes and definitely will get back to you with the questions that you asked.
Okay, thank you so much, any more uh questions, I don't think council has any more question, if we do.
She said a real quick, uh, I'll go through these last slides real quick and then we'll talk for like half hour, forty-five minutes.
Right. That is how our meetings u- usually go, um, I think the next item. Is the potential, I don't see potential social district, uh, Council of Monaco, uh, put this on the agenda, so I'll let you have the floor, Councilman.
Well, actually, one, one quick thing before we do move on to that, can, if there is for Mr. Pangory, if you have any. Thing you can send to us regarding west, you know, any preliminary drawings or anything west of Grashit. Um, like a little more information would be nice uh to see.
We will forward those as they get developed.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Um, now we're going to the potential social district that you want to talk about, Councilman.
Great, thanks Mayor, yeah, so let me, got quit a few uh, Google Map tabs open here, let me find the right one. So, and, and I guess real quickly before sharing, so uh, social districts is, is a new thing. And I thought since um, we've, we've got an updated master plan now and uh, com- uh, Councilwoman Lucito and I have discussed this. And please jump in uh, whenever you'd like to, um. It's uh, a whole new concept uh, as of the July one, twenty twenty. And with um, the diminishing business on Kelly. Regarding with the master plan too, where we're trying to do more mixed use. Or something that'll spur a little more development there, since we have, I mean, for example, between uh. Topher and nine mile, you know, there's an entire block that's basically unused right now. To try and spur a little development, I thought this uh, well, uh, Sarah and I thought this would be one idea. Uh, that maybe could spur some development, uh, is a social district where it's an area that the city can allocate. Um, where there's like a commons area where you have a few bars and of course, um, this is a proactive idea. As we only have, you know, we've mentioned Big Daddy Games earlier, we've got one bar on Kelly. This will specifically be between Topher and nine mile, to maybe attract a few more if they knew something like this could be possible. Uh, so this is just very preliminary and a proactive idea that we wanted to bring forward so that it's in front of the community. Um, in front of the rest of city council, because of course, we can, you know, since there's only five of us, we can only talk one-on-one. If we've got three of us in a group, that's too many according to the Open Meetings Act. So, this was an idea, just wanted to bring forward in public, um, and um, it's, you know. Very basic at this point, you know, haven't touched on any technical details yet, but I do have. Uh, uh, Google Map that we could share real quickly just to kinda get the feel for what uh, social district would mean. And actually, you know, before, actually, before I do that too, I don't know if anyone remembers, back in twenty fourteen. We had a charrette done uh, with a group that came from Toronto. Um, they had looked at different areas in the city and one of the areas was Kelly. And they were saying, hey, you've got this beautiful giant median on Kelly, you know, can you do something with it? You know, right now, it's just a bunch of grass mainly, you know, there's a few flower beds in there. I know I had one flower bed on there that was way too big that I could not, uh, you know, handle. Um, and we've cut some of them down just because there, there's so much median space. Um, but they had some ideas that I think maybe with like a, a social district, we'd actually be able to do uh, some of the ideas. So, let me bring that picture up real quickly, um, just scrolling down to it.
You're talking about that school from Toronto that came here when uh, Steve Duchesne was here, I remember that. I was, I, I wasn't on council, but I was uh, invited to that meeting.
Yeah, I think you were in one of these pictures here.
Yeah, going like this, I, my hair is all love, I was like, they don't stop putting that picture in every little thing, but yeah.
So, so real quick, be, would, you know, this is how we're like, when I originally thought of this idea was obviously because of the study. And since the study, the one thing I thought that we could always do, which would be pretty easy. Is just put like a walking path throughout the median on Kelly Road, like just, you know, walking path, if people wanna go walk their dogs, maybe have some benches, people can sit. Um, all the way through Kelly, um, I just thought it would be nice, but there's a lot of apartments along Kelly Road. Especially like north of um, nine mile, there's a lot of apartments, um. And those people, you know, I mean, obviously they can walk on the sidewalks and stuff too, but it would just be, you know, kind of nice to have a little bit more walkable area, they don't have yards. Where they can kind of, you know, go out and like walk around and there's a lot of trees on Kelly, which makes it nice and. So I always thought like doing just even a walking path down nine mile would be, or down Kelly, Kelly's median would be really nice. And then it'd be also like a great spot, um, for like, if there were groups that wanted to do like, if we wanted to look some sort of like outside public art show. To have it like displayed on that median throughout Kelly Road would be really nice, um, you know, things like that.
Uh, so, yeah, here's exactly, um, what you're saying, here's the. Uh, they grew from Toronto, they're called the Institute Without Boundaries, um, and they, they came here from Toronto. And here was like the picture they were at least showing, you know, you can see, I think Saint Thomas in the background and in the very back. Uh, behind this would be like Stevens, so this is like a different section than we were talking about a second ago, but like, um. Councilwoman Lucito was saying, like, here's a path through the middle and, you know, you see some art here, you know, you see a little. You know, I think you can get some beer here on the right, uh, they're cooking some food on the left, but just something, you know, we have a giant median there. And uh, you know, we could take more advantage of it and um, uh, we were thinking this was at least. Uh, one idea we could use to do this and, um, I guess just for some context too, uh. Mount Clemens has already approved one in their downtown area social district and then Sinclair Shores is looking at one at nine mile and Greater Mac. Uh, so, we had done a couple very preliminary things here is, you know, Google Maps. And I drew something out here, um, whoops. The, the green area would essentially be this commons area, so. What would happen, and I guess this is, I'd probably try to compare this to what they've talked about in the last few weeks in Sinclair Shores. Um, where if you're familiar with uh, nine mile and Greater Mac, um, they're gonna close down like the street that goes through the middle. And you'll essentially be able to walk from like one side to the other without there being cars coming through. So, we thought there could be a similar idea, since we have the giant median. What we could do, and this could probably just be on weekends, I think that's what they're going to do there, just Saturdays or just Sundays at least. Where the traffic, um, the red and like pink, um, are the lanes, uh, you'd have the traffic all go to one side of Kelly. And then this other side of Kelly, that light green area, if you can tell the different colors. Would be this like commons area where you can kinda just hang out, so you'd be able to hang out in the median. In the street here on Kelly, then on southbound Kelly, between wherever, wherever we decide to block it off. And, you know, the other side where we block it off, um, you know, one example, and again, this is very rough because uh. You know, one requirement, say, had, you have at least three uh liquor licenses in that area and so. I mean, we need to attract a couple businesses before we're able to even apply for a social district license. Um, but what, what a potential possibility could be is like we block off at Empire, you know, if you wanna keep going southbound on Kelly. You'll just be like one lane on each side of Kelly, um, to get through. Or else you just pull in here and we've got a lot of alleys also where we could pull in. Uh, you know, you can pull around and then park in front, you know, because we've got a ton of parking on Kelly also. And of course, you know, there's some vacancies for some bars to come in and then like on Saturdays or Sundays, we can block the area off. You know, maybe we'd have to pave a little lane through the median here, you know, you see my red line going through the median here. Um, uh, you know, so it might take a little bit of work on ours, you know, on the city side to make something happen. But if, you know, if it can spur some development on Kelly, I think it'd be in line with our master plan and something we could do, so. Um, that was essentially like one area, you know, we could do it between like Empire and Rosetta here. Or, um, uh, whoops, clicking the wrong things here.
I think this is something similar to downtown Detroit when they closed off that one area, um, near Woodward.
Yeah, yeah.
And it closed any of that sitting area right in front of City Hall and it can, it's something like similar to that.
Yeah.
You know, clear view, pretty much, right?
Right.
And Mayor Owens, what's nice about like the first area that he showed is that those are, it's like two strip malls there.
Right.
Um, you know, because that's where like Hungry Howies and stuff is, and I just feel like that's a nice. Spot that could be just very walkable, it's like store, you know, boutiques opened or, you know, whatever, couple of bars, restaurants. Where you have a lot of variety there to make it like more attractive for people to go there and kinda walk around to all the different like businesses. Because they're small locations, but you could get more like specialty, unique things there, which I think would be really nice for the, for the city.
Right, yeah. Yeah, I think so, and I think the best part about it too is like it's right around the corner from my house.
Yeah, you could walk.
So, you know, you and I can walk up there and we don't have to drive home, it's perfect.
Exactly.
This would be quite a haul for me, I think it'd be like a two and a half mile walk, so I am a little upset about that.
Right, exactly.
Um, so yeah, if we pulled into Street View real quickly here, um, for this first area. Well, and actually, you know, we've got the little thing here, I know it's for the lawn mowers, but we can make it for people soon enough, uh, into the, into the median there. Um, you know, if we pull through, of course, um, and I know, uh, Monique, you've talked about the. Uh, Hostess Store over here too, uh, which was over, you know, over here and a couple of the businesses have swapped out and new ones have swapped in and. You know, you can tell there's some vacant area here, but yeah, it would be through like these couple blocks here and you'd be able to just kinda hang out. You know, like you said, like at Woodward and uh, Jefferson, you know, downtown Detroit. You know, people are walking through the street at that point and safely because everything's blocked off, which I thought was pretty cool. I was working right downtown there, but that didn't happen till after I left, so that, that, that's no fun too, uh.
Right, I know, I used to work at City Hall down there, I'm like, you wanna do everything when I leave, I got a question to make. Is this gonna be easier, just say for instance, I don't know if we own that area, but you see how big that Dollar Tree Center parking lot is? Why don't we just, you know, because most parking, um, areas just have that front of the building parking. Well, we uh, just took half of that parking and did it there.
Sure, now I think this was a question I had, is this, who owns all this parking? I guess, is, is the parking owned by each of the business owners or I thought I've heard. That the parking could be owned by the city, I, I guess I've never heard that before, but um. Uh, I guess that was a question, I think Sarah, you were saying that, right?
Um, yeah, so I believe that either, we're, it's unsure exactly who owns it, but it's not the business owners, it's a, it's a right of way, it's an easement. Um, my only concern with that would be is that if this draws a lot of traffic, which I would hope it would, would be lack of parking spaces. That would be concerning doing that, obviously, because there's no other parking lots like around. But maybe Mr. Blum can kinda touch on that, and I know this is something I've discussed with him about who owns that and there's a little uncertainty. But um, it's definitely something I'd like to eventually verify and who owns that, those lots.
Because I don't see not too many people, I know, I, I go to that Dollar Center here and there, but it's never overly crowded, you know.
Looks like this, the forecourt.
Looks like that, yeah, exactly, and I'll sort of call a lot of owners.
My idea is if we get a lot of businesses in there, to have that whole strip be, you know, bumping with people, you know, hanging out and so. Yeah. That Dollar Tree right now, that parking lot right now might not be that full. There's only like three businesses, I think, active in there with just a Dollar Tree, Hungry Howies and I think Supercuts is in that one. But those middle ones, I think, are all empty, well, the Dry Cleaners is open, but.
Yeah.
You know, if you had a couple of, like, a, a bar there, I mean, look, you were talking about Big Daddy Games being, you know, too busy. You have a bar there and a social district, there might be a ton of people that wanna go there and hang out outside, so.
And those buildings might get filled because they got more, yeah, you're right, yeah, so you might need the extra space for those businesses that are empty.
Right, I mean, that's what I would hope, that it would, you know, would happen.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Um, yeah, to Mr. Blum, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, um, the south of nine mile, um, the parking lots. Are part of the Kelly Superhighway right of way and in most cases, the easement goes up to the sidewalk right in front of the business. However, each one of these properties has a deed restriction that requires them to maintain the parking lot in the right of way. So it's not a city parking lot, we don't maintain it, um, but we technically own it through the right of way. So I don't know what legal nuances that creates, but that is the case, just south of nine mile, that is the case.
Hmm, okay. Interesting. Okay, I mean, I think that's a good thing for this, it seems like, uh, positive. Um, so yeah, if we just go south, yeah, it's kinda, you know, the, the second strip mall is pretty similar, you know, um. Uh, same kinda setup, you know, the whole, goes the whole length of the block and there's parking the whole length of the. Uh, same kind of setup, you know, the whole, goes the whole length of the block and there's parking the whole length of the block. Um, and I think essentially, I think the, what I was just showing from above. Goes all the way then down to there's a, a funeral home at the south side here, so then. Actually, it includes, these are all the businesses that we um, sold to the same owner of Big Daddy Games. He, he owned this uh, um, area, and then of course, there's other businesses in the other half here. Um, so that could be one potential area. Yes, go ahead, what'd you say?
I'm sorry, um, I was thinking, so I know we gave him four, and I'm thinking like. Out of one of those buildings to, to, no, I was going to say something else, make it out of, um, because I think he's, he's building businesses, I was going to say. Uh, uh, tear one down to make additional parking, if we're gonna expand that area where more people want to sit and more businesses. To expand that one, one of those buildings to a parking space. But I think he already got some things going, because if we're gonna do that, I think it's gonna be more space needed now. And all those are empty. What's that, four buildings he got?
Yeah, all those areas for sure, because uh, the, the roofs are not uh, exactly intact.
Yeah.
Well, that's another thing that, you know, like moving forward, if this is an idea, I mean, obviously that we can't do it right now, we don't even have the liquor licenses there, but to start talking about it. Um, is that when we did our master plan for Kelly Road. We zone, we, our future land use map is this is all like mixed use, like this whole Kelly Road. So I would like to be like, moving forward with changing that zoning for this area, so like, let's say the guy who owns Big Daddy. If he wanted to like change that building into mixed use and like build a, you know, like lofts above it. Something like that, he would be able to without having to take it to the ZBA right now. I'd like to try to be like proactive and try to get some of this future land use stuff done that we put into our master plan.
Yeah, I thought we did that. I, I don't know, we talked about that like two years ago, we haven't did it yet.
Right, yeah, we put it in the master plan, but it's never actually been like rezoned.
Okay, yeah, maybe we need to put that on a next agenda.
If, if I may, um, thank you, Member Lucito, yes, um, it's also some of the requirements of the RRC, Resurification. Is um, changing the zoning and making it much more um, uh, business friendly.
Well, Mayor, if you want to vote to add it to the next agenda real quick, I think we could just do that, and then I'll have it on the next agenda.
Yeah, I think we should, go ahead and um, add that to the next agenda, so we can start being, I mean, we already thought about doing it, but. Let's put it on paper. And uh, you know, and change it or add it.
All right, I'd support that.
I would too. Um, motion and support, call the roll. We gotta call the roll on that, or it's just something we just need to add?
Almost could just add it, I don't even.
Yeah, we just add, that's Mr. Con, Con from Monaco.
Yeah, I like votes. We can all just say I, we just said, all said I as a strong vote.
Especially this year, you like votes. But uh, what I was gonna say, uh, a, a couple, you know, I know that'd be one thing, anything else, we, you know, while we on this meeting. Uh, some of the things we talked about that we need to bring back, because a lot of people didn't. Just, you know, probably bring some of this stuff back, just the overview, because we had like fifty, almost fifty to sixty people at our council meetings and. They don't see stuff like this we talk about, you know, that's probably why your company think it was gonna be boring. And I actually thought it was gonna be quick, but it started being, it's like really fun to see where your city is going, and they don't see it. You know what I'm saying? So, even if we, um, Councilman DeMonico bring it back, uh, very uh, briefly, I'm gonna say that. Because he, he'll make it a whole different, uh, whole different night, you know, movie night, but. Just bring it up and we can do our, uh, overview to the community, what we talked about tonight, and. So they can see that, you know, we're not always grabbing each other by the throat every council meeting, like we actually have fun and get along, y'all don't see this part. So, and see that, uh, what our, our future plans are for uh, the city. You know, as a, as a preview that we did tonight, you know, bring it back.
Okay. Yeah, sure, let's add this to the next agenda too then.
Yeah, so I can see, um, what you uh, put on there.
Yeah, I mean, I would love to have Councilman Curly and Ms. Moore be available too, to kind of see our ideas to moving forward. They might have some, you know, suggestions and input and, you know, and obviously, we're just talking about this right now. Um, you know, we're not moving forward with anything, but it's just nice, like you said, Madam Mayor, to, you know, think about these ideas for East Point.
Right, and also talk to the, you know, business owners. Because this is gonna, you know, advance their business. They might want to be the first person they try to get. I don't know if you're trying to get a city, you know, get a liquor license or whatever, but it'll wake them up to let other business owners that they know, entrepreneurs know. This is what East Point is doing, you better hurry up and get this building, or you better, you know, this is what, you know what I'm saying? Get people excited about coming to East Point and seeing our plans and our, uh, our vision. And so, getting those property owners, you know, to um, be a part of the idea and letting them know that, you know. Because that's why a lot of them don't come to our meetings, where they feel like they're not a part of the process. We just, they just, you know, they just pay taxes here, do business, and they go home. But they know what we're trying to do in front of their property, I think. You know, letting them know and letting them be a part of the conversation. I wish they would have, we could have invited some of them tonight, you know, but um. Just letting them be a part of the conversation and process, and sometimes even know, even when they know we're about to do certain things, they might even. Have, make better signs for their buildings or, you know, uh, make their, you know what I'm saying, make their buildings look even better. Because there are no people are rebuilding around their, their business. It might make them better business owners, you know what I'm saying, so.
Yeah.
Uh, if we can get them some type of way, uh, Ms. Holman, if you can get, you know, let them know. You know, or somebody needs to, you know, when we're doing stuff around people, businesses or residents. Can we send out some type of letter to inform them what our ideas are, and that we want them to be a part of what we're doing and have some say so. Because we don't want a resident saying, well, I don't know why they built that, I gotta, you know. I can't walk very well, or I couldn't get to this place, that's how I'll go get my medication this way, why did they build this? Or it could be anything, this is my way I get to work. Why didn't nobody ask me about my, uh, perspective? So, you know, when we're doing something, and I think we do that in the past, but when we're thinking about or have an idea about doing something. That affects the, the community, especially in front of their business. Or, you know, like, it's right by my house, you know, I might have some, some of my residents knocking on my door, they, well, they know better, nobody comes to my house. Um, on my porch, they know better than that, but you know, just some people wondering like, why wasn't I, why wasn't I informed? About what was going on, uh, right around the corner from me, so if we can, like, you know, try to reach out to people that. You know, when we're doing stuff, to let them know, we want to hear what you have to say too. You know, but I definitely want to share this with a co, both council members. Because I know they're gonna have some feedback, so.
Yeah, yeah, for sure, this was, uh, yeah, just meant to be a, a start for sure, and that, uh. Uh, certainly wasn't looking for any sorts of votes or anything, and, you know, we, we tried looking. Uh, Sarah and I tried looking at, you know, Nine Mile or like Nine and Crashtery, especially since of course, that's the DDA. But it felt like we were just kind of forcing something, um, in most areas there. I think we, we didn't think there was something that was, uh. Too easy to put together at least, um, and it seems like there's more opportunity on Kelly, so that's at least why. Um, we thought it'd be a good idea, at least give some examples, because again, you know, this is not, you know, a huge amount of research has not been put into it. We just know it's um, a possibility, and so we were just proposing a couple ideas, if there's a different area of Kelly or. You know, a different area of the city that this would work, um, I think we'd be happy to, to see that. Um, uh, but thi- this was just two, uh, two possibilities, because yeah, if I, if I move down, um. Here, here was like our other initial idea too, was like between, um, Lister and then down to Topher. Um, where it'd be the same kind of thing, and actually, I think what you were talking about a minute ago, Mayor. Um, there's like some green space at the edge here.
Okay.
At Lister and Kelly, and I guess let me, uh, let's just move down there on Street View a little. Easier to see, yeah, like here's some, some green space.
That's a big space.
Yeah, so this could be part of like, they called the commons area, is what the social, social district like language is. So that, that, this area and the median could all be part of it, you know, we blocked the street off in the front here, and you could just kind of hang out on this end. And you know, maybe there'd be able to be like a bar or restaurant or a couple of them, like somewhere in this, um, block. You know, I think some of this building is available right now too.
Yeah.
So that could be like another possibility, um, and then of course, um, this next block. Is, you know, the old Snookers, now Big Daddy Games, and of course, there's a ton of parking here. And, you know, I think our sole liquor license probably between Topher and Nine Mile right now. And then a wide open, you know, area here, I'm not sure if someone's recently bought it or anything, but at least nothing is in there right now. Um, and then you get into like Giuseppe's Bakery and a little further down and that sort of thing.
My biggest concern with this area is like, uh, Councilman DeMonico said with the first area. Is that there was alleyway behind all of the buildings, with this area in the middle of it is Big Daddy Games, and there's no alley. So it'd be no thoroughfare like through the, the whole, you know, behind it.
Right.
Like the direct traffic, you know, into the parking lot.
Right here. Yeah, there's no alley right here between Ash and Prosper.
Yeah, like the, like with the first district, there's an alley behind, so that would help with, I think, the traffic flow, because you could utilize that alley.
I think, and we should, um, I know Detroit, they got the alley, I don't know if you guys probably been, probably have, that one alley that they decorated. People eat in the alley, it's art in the alley and everything like that. I love that, maybe we can, you know. If we do that area in the street, maybe we can incorporate that too, if people, you know, if people walking down and want to hang out, they can go. To the alley too, you know, just something different.
Right.
But yeah.
Council, if I may, two one eight one one, Kelly, um, there is a, a new business coming in, so that building is under construction.
Right here.
They're working with the building department, and yes, there is a, an incredible business coming in there, just to let you know.
Like the whole block?
Yes, they bought the whole building. They were originally leasing it, and now they bought it, so that's a really good sign.
No, that's awesome. I'm really excited about that, because it's been empty for a long time.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Area I think would just be really nice, because you have all those little storefronts, and I just think that we could just make it a really cool, like, nice walkable area. You know, with all, it doesn't even have to be just all bars and restaurants, like I said, like, you know. Boutiques, maybe a painting with a twist or something like that, can go in there, you know?
Right.
And if you do look at any of these downtown areas that we've maybe cited tonight, or we're in like the Nine Mile presentations. They certainly aren't all, uh, all bars and restaurants and places like that either. There is all kinds of other, you know, things interspersed within there, so. Um, you gotta have a mix, or else it's not a successful area, you know?
And also in that space that we're talking about, in the, um, by the Hungry Howies, where we're gonna put that space. We can also do a flea market, farmer's market there too, where people, uh, can, you know, sell fruit and vegetables on certain days and stuff like that. So we can always mix it up.
Yeah, it would be great, like if we decided to do something like that, it would obviously just be in the summer months when it's warm enough, because people aren't gonna go outside and drink in the winter. Um, so, yeah, like if we kept it closed on the weekend.
Not everybody. Wait a second.
Um, Mayor, that's a great idea, because then during the day, if it was closed too, we could definitely do like a farmer market in that same location where it's closed. Like, I think that's a fantastic idea, like during the day, try to have vendors come out, and then you can have it be like a social district, I think that'd be great.
Right, or also in, in October month, we can have, you know, apple cider, you know, um, all that just, I'm getting hungry.
Like, Harvest Fest at Eastbrook, I think that'd be like a way cooler location on Kelly Road for something like that than in Eastbrook Commons.
Right. I think this whole presentation, I think I'm gonna do it in the beginning, so when people do the hearing of the public. They can, you know, they can ask questions or say something, you know, sometimes people can't stay for our, our whole eight hour meeting and comment. So if we do it in the beginning and say, this is what we talked about, is a presentation, have councilmen talk about the, uh, the ideas, and then when people come. And they can talk about how they want to, uh, you know, what they saw. I think sometimes, you know, we talk about stuff and we're gonna give them a really, a good chance, uh, because everybody can't stay till the end, you know? So we do a presentation, like, you know, like we do any presentation. Do the, just to get it, go ahead, get it out the way, do a presentation of, uh, this whole, um, vision. And what we're trying, you know, what we talked about, and um, we can talk about the zoning and stuff later on in the meeting, but just. For the people who just, you know, always log on early and want to talk in the beginning, and can at the end, just show, show this part. I think it, it gets the meeting exciting, we're talking about, so. So be ready for your presentation, Con from Monaco.
All right, I'll prepare.
Okay, well, I guess, I don't know, I don't want to rush you, if you're done, you guys want to?
I don't, I don't think I can have anything else right now.
I'll stop sharing even.
Thank you for that. This is actually a good meeting, um, a whole bunch of ideas. And you guys know that's what I like, I'm excited about it. Um, so we're gonna go to Mayor Council Report, starting with Con from Monaco.
Sure, I think this whole meeting was all my ideas, so I just hope we can, uh, make a lot of these, uh, happen, which I think we can. Um, just, uh, planning a little ahead of course is important when, uh, it's multiple years involved to do some of this stuff, so. Um, yeah, hopefully, hopefully we can do that, so, yeah, that's all I have.
Mayor, go ahead.
I just want to take a minute to thank, uh, AEW, McKenna, all of the administration that came out today to. Help facilitate this meeting and give us the information that we needed. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you. I want to thank AEW, McKenna, and also, uh, the people in the past that, uh, Con from Monaco, uh. Brung back up from Toronto, and, uh, you know, people who helped put things together from the past that we probably don't work with anymore. But they already set the vision, um, you know, vision up for us, and then we just have to execute it. So we want to thank them again, whether they're listening or not, because we probably reach back out to them. Uh, which they'll be excited about, because they remember that we didn't forget them, and so, um, just everybody, all the team, you know, everybody who. Who, uh, chimed in tonight and listening to the vision at East Point, and, um, being a part of what we're, uh, how we're moving forward, so. Uh, saying that, we're gonna go to adjournment. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Motion to support, please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucito?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes, me and adjourn, have a good night, everybody, good job.
Have a good night, everyone.
Good, everyone.
Yeah.
Have a good night.
Good night.